Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's Monday, July 10th, 2017, and I want to welcome you to the Bennington Select Board's meeting. I hope we're not -- I think we're just about on time, considering everything. I would like to introduce myself. It's Tom Jacobs. I am the chair right now, but my colleagues, if you could introduce yourselves. See, you're eating lunch. Go ahead, Chad.
Good evening, everyone. Chad Gordon.
Hello, my name is Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
And Jim Carroll will be joining us soon.
Good evening, my name's Carson Thurber.
And I'm Jean Connor.
And I'm Stuart Hurd, the town manager, and next to me is Linda Bermudez, our secretary.
Thank you, Linda, for all the work that you do. It's much appreciated. Why don't you speak into the mic, Tom, so folks will actually hear what you're saying? What we'd like to do is have the Pledge of Allegiance, and Chad, if you would lead us in that, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion and justice of our land.
Thanks, Chad. We have our consent agenda, which has been circulated to the board members and the media. It contains the minutes of the June 26th and 27th meeting, and also the warrants, which I have reviewed. Are there any questions? But I think I'll entertain a motion first, if I could. Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept.
Second, discussion on the consent agenda.
Just, there were a couple name corrections.
Okay. And have you already got those, Linda? Having the name corrections, could you vote all in favor of the consent agenda as amended with the names? Signify by eye?
Eye.
And do we have abstentions for any of the consent agenda?
Abstentions.
Okay. We have six in favor of the consent agenda as circulated and amended, and one abstention. We have top opportunity for citizens' comment. If any citizens have not signed up, that is our usual arrangement, but if there's someone out there that would like to speak about matters not on the agenda, please feel free to step up to our mic, introduce yourself, and have a dialogue with us for the next 15 minutes.
You feel that way sometimes?
I take it there's no one. Having said that, we have now saved some time and opportunity for the other matters on our agenda. The next item and the first item of business will be the Apple Hill Chelsea Solar Project. We have that, which is a continuation of the last two weeks ago's hearing. I will recuse myself as I did then. I think it's important, and I want to reiterate, that I recuse myself because my firm represented the applicant, one of their corporations, in the purchase of the land back in 2014. I have not been involved since that date. I think it's important for everyone to understand, including our self-described social media experts and champions of truth and honesty, that I don't represent anyone in this matter, and have not, and will not. But the only thing that I would ask, as I step four from the chair, to give to Donald, is that you respect the integrity of the board, and you respect your neighbors. So having said that, I turn it over to you.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
I'll say it again, but if you haven't had a chance to sign up, maybe Dan, you could bring me the -- or somebody could bring me that sheet, please. So we are continuing to have the conversation that we started at our last meeting about these projects. And before we go anywhere, I just want everybody to know that we're not going to vote on anything tonight. There's no vote happening tonight. And I'm sorry that we didn't sort of maybe push that out earlier, because I understand some people found that kind of stressful. The second thing I'd like to just remind, really, this is mostly for us board members, that this is still a listening session. We are not negotiating tonight. This is not a back-and-forth negotiation. If we get to the point where we feel like there is any conversation to be had about that, it will have to be done in an executive session, because it would be inappropriate to do it otherwise. But tonight, we're listening. We're listening hard to hear what our community has to say. And I guess I'd ask everybody out there to, as you did mostly last week, really just try to keep the temperature down a little bit, keep it a civil discussion, and I'd ask you, if you can possibly resist, not to clap and jeer and hoot and holler any more than absolutely necessary.
Well, you want to be a joy kill.
I am a joy kill. I mentioned last week that we, when we decided to have our session on this last time, Libby Harris was unable to be there, and I had offered to keep the public comment period open, not only for her, but for anybody. So we're going to accept public comment from everybody tonight. I would love to ask, as much as possible, if you've already had a chance to speak, to let other people speak first. But I'm going to deviate ever so slightly from that, and if she's willing, ask Libby Harris to come up and speak first. And then it might make sense to have a couple of the other people who would like to speak from the neighborhood follow directly after her. So I've got a list here that looks like Libby Harris, Bill Knight, Lauren Boblock, Diane, I can't read your last name.
Lizer.
Lizer, okay. Sorry about that. Mary Morrissey. And I'm not sure where we -- Dan Malberg, Allison, and I'm not sure where the list ends for the Apple Hill, but maybe I'll let you folks do that. I guess it does seem fair. We had a long presentation from the developers last session, and so it seems fair to give the Apple Hill folks a chance to make their case, too. I'd love to get everybody in. There are quite a few people on this list, a number of people not from Apple Hill. So if I could ask you folks to really try to be concise and not repeat arguments, if possible, just kind of stick with what you have to say, and that would be really helpful for us. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Will the board be free to question those who speak?
I think that's reasonable. Yeah, if it's, you know, if we can try not to get -- we don't have a lot of time for this, so if we could try not to get too sidetracked on things, that'd be great. I mean, but certainly, we're here to listen, and if we don't understand what they're saying, let's write it to ground.
Good.
So just as long as we're listening hard, I think that'll be good. So Libby Harris, if you're willing, it'd be great to have you come join us at the seat.
Is it okay? I think Brad changed the angle of this. Is it okay if I just angle it back?
Absolutely. Whatever makes -- whatever's comfortable.
My voice is a little raspy tonight. I'm a victim of summer allergies, so I hope that I'll be clear.
Abby, can you bring the microphone close to your mouth? There we go.
Is this okay?
That's better.
When I was invited to speak, because I was out of the country last Monday, I was told that I was sort of the main event, so my talk is longer than five minutes.
That's okay.
I hope that's okay.
That's okay. If -- yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I want to thank the Select Board for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm delighted to see so many people here who are interested in being part of a decision that will affect all of us in Bennington for a long time to come. When I think of why I moved to Vermont 17 years ago, and why Bennington was my choice for residence, first and foremost, I see the sign as I enter town saying, "Welcome to historic Bennington," and then I drive through miles of pristine woodlands in fresh air. This is the southwestern gateway into Vermont and home of the Green Mountain Boys, who fought like devils for this very land. As I've lived in Bennington, I've been proud as a resident to see so many positive revitalizing projects going on. The new consortium, which will re-energize a large part of downtown. The Arts Council, which formed not long ago, but has hit the ground running with so many fascinating projects. The new holistic medical facility, which offers preventive health and movement classes for all of us. These are just a few ways I see Bennington thriving, exuding the best values a town can have. But there are threats and challenges to our town as well. One such example is Alco Ecos Energy's four-year attempt to install two contiguous solar projects on a 27-acre parcel which faces Routes 279 and 7, the Welcome Center, the Monument, Southern Vermont College, and the golf course, to name just a few. Why am I talking with you about this? Because both projects are adjacent -- can you not hear me? Because both projects are adjacent to my property, and so I have the right, as in a butter, to file and receive intervenor status. That gives me the right to see all motions filed, and the ability to participate in the process. Since 2014, I have done this, and for two years alone, because the town chose not to participate in the beginning. But the town of Bennington did choose to participate after understanding the details of the proposed sites, and was given intervenor status, and has fought right alongside me to see right be done by upholding our town plan. The Select Board has taken months and hundreds of hours to devise a thorough town plan that delineated different districts in the town that could be built on for industrial purposes and others that were labeled rural conservation areas, and could not be used for anything other than limited residential development. The town's attorney, Rob Wilmington, filed forceful briefs to the Public Service Board using the strength of this town plan, and on February of 2016, the Public Service Board denied the Chelsea project. I would like to give the Select Board some excerpts from that 62-page. It's just --
Thank you.
This is --
Thank you, Troy.
Is this better? Thank you. This is a 62-page document. I have taken out the pieces of the ruling that support our town plan, and state clearly that no use of that land, other than those specifically stated, should be granted. Page 52. The town plan makes the following design standard applicable to any new development in the rural conservation districts. Specific design standards shall apply to the new development in the rural conservation districts in recognition of the existence of a concentration of agricultural and forest lands, and to protect the extraordinary scenic resources such lands and uses provide. Any use in the rural conservation district, including single-family dwellings, shall require approval under those regulatory guidelines. Development in this area cannot be sited in prominently visible locations of hillsides or ridgelines. Shall utilize earth-tone colors and non-reflective materials on exterior surfaces of all structures, and must minimize clearing of natural vegetation. This land conservation measure is made specifically applicable to the project site by the Town of Bennington's Land Use Plan. While Chelsea has taken steps to limit the visibility of the project on the hillside where it is proposed to be located, the clearing of 10.6 acres of existing vegetation runs directly afoul of this provision in the town plan and its vision for orderly future development. Page 59. We appreciate the efforts of Chelsea and the Department to propose an unprecedented and costly vegetative screening plan to mitigate visual impacts of the project. However, our conclusion that the project would violate a clear written community standard intended to preserve the aesthetics or scenic beauty of the project site and its surrounding area concludes our analysis of the aesthetics impact of the project using the Queechy Test. Page 62. It is hereby ordered, adjudged, and decreed by the Public Service Board of the State of Vermont that the petition of Chelsea Solar LLC for a certificate of public good pursuant to 30 VSA 248 is denied. This was the first denial of a solar project ever in the state of Vermont, and town after town have solicited help from our own Select Board to fight for their towns to have proper sightings. Alco has accused me of being against renewable energy. Let me assure you that I am an environmentalist. I am totally in favor of renewable energy, and I think so are many of you. It is the path we must take so that the future generations might live on a safer and surer planet. It is the appropriate sightings of renewable energy projects that is being debated here tonight. What kind of a company is Alco Energy? I can tell you that it is not one of an ever-growing number of small, locally-based solar companies who install residential and small community solar projects that will help local residents and our town meet the state's renewable energy goals. It is a Wall Street firm who has gotten huge tax subsidies and is making huge profits at the expense of our community and state. And it has used the most arm-twisting tactics on me. I will give you one of many examples of how they have abused and threatened me. Alco was scheduled to formulate a maintenance agreement with me for a shared right-of-way. They bought a six-acre parcel right in front of my house, consisting of an old apple orchard. My community has deed restrictions. Only residential homes can be put on the land. Alco was going to use the land for its commercial purposes, and knew that I would have to go to Superior Court at the expense of at least $10,000 to fight their commercial use. I am a retired schoolteacher. They counted on my slim income to bully their way into the neighborhood. Anyway, this maintenance agreement was very simple, indicating that we would split costs of maintaining the right-of-way and snow removal. This is actually the maintenance agreement that we were supposed to sign, made by the Malone, made by the company intending for us to agree to this simple agreement. The principals, Thomas and Michael Malone, asked for a conference call with my lawyer, Peter Lawrence, and me at his office. When the call came in, Peter confirmed that we were here to draw that agreement. Thomas Malone, the head of the firm, said that no agreement would be drawn unless I agreed to withdraw my intervenor status, which would withdraw me from any further opposition to them. They then added that they owned the six-acre parcel apple orchard facing my house, and that they had the right to cut down each and every tree if I didn't withdraw my intervenor status. Since I refused to withdraw and refuse to sign that agreement, and they refused to sign that agreement, to date I have received not one cent from the company. Is this a neighbor you'd like to have?
Abby, do you have that in writing, where they made that threat?
That was in testimony in front of the Public Service Board, where Brad Wilson was questioned by me, and it's part of the record.
And who made that remark? That they would cut down every tree that they felt like?
Thomas Malone, when he was in the conference call with Peter Lawrence and me. In a short period of time after Chelsea Solar was denied, Alco filed eight motions with the Public Service Board, harassing them in every way they could think of to alter their decision. In April of 2017, just three months ago, the Public Service Board, in one answer, denied all eight motions, and upheld their denial of the certificate of public good for Chelsea Solar based on the clear written community standard in our town plan, which says only residential and no commercial development can occur in a rural conservation district. The only recourse for the company was to file in Supreme Court, in the Supreme Court of Vermont, to reverse the decision of the Public Service Board. They did so in June, and had until July 5th, five days ago, to file their briefs. They asked for an extension stating that they were in settlement discussions with intervenor parties. What would that mean for the Malones? If they get the town to agree with them, then they go to Supreme Court with great leverage. They will have removed one major opposition. Why give our power away? We've won every decision so far. In his filing statement with the Supreme Court on June 21st, three weeks ago, the town attorney, Rob Wilmington, wrote, "The Public Service Board based its decision on factual findings that the project would unduly interfere with the orderly development of the region, and would have an undue effect on aesthetics, and that the Board acted within its expert competence, and according to law, made no procedural errors that would warrant reversal or remand, and made findings supported by the record." The Department of Public Service said exactly the same thing in their filing statement, and I've just filed as well. So why not let this process take place? It is totally in keeping with all of our points of view so far. And what are these settlement discussions? Money. If they can't win fair and square after harassing and abusing me for four years, and costing the town and state money to answer their frivolous charges at the 11th hour, when they are going before the Supreme Court, they want to buy our approval. They offered me $50,000 to remove my opposition. Not only did I refuse, but I'm going to fight alongside the Department of Public Service in Supreme Court. They offered the town $200,000 to do the same. They think they can buy our silence and give them the opportunity to push forward, and yet again, use rural conservation land for an industrial solar installation. And this offer is chum change to this company. It is equivalent to Native Americans selling Manhattan for $24, not exactly shrewd business dealings. Regarding Alco's amended proposal, in which the company claims to have addressed the aesthetic concerns of the town, and the wind and noise concerns of myself and the Apple Hill Homeowners Association, the fact remains that the town plan prohibits commercial development in the rural conservation district. I take no comfort in the noise study Alco -- I'm sorry. I take no comfort in the noise study Alco commissioned, as it was done by a firm that has a track record of underestimating the impacts of noise. Michael Malone asked me who I would prefer, and I gave them the name of a noise expert that had been hired by the town of New Haven, whose area expertise is transportation noise. But Alco chose to go with the firm in whom I had no confidence. The lawyer representing the Department of Public Service at the Supreme Court is a seasoned, exceptional lawyer with 37 years of experience. I understand it will probably take a year for this decision. Let's let this case take its course. If we cave, if the town agrees to take this money, then we will set a precedent for every town in Vermont. We will be telling them that no matter how hard you work on your town plan, no matter how hard your energy sighting committee worked to come up with 570 acres of prime land, and that does not include the Chelsea or Apple Hill sightings. That an out-of-state developer can bypass all of your hard, thorough work, and by its way to win, to distract us with revised plans that are filed nowhere, when even these two are not in compliance with the town plan, and will take at least two years to implement, and to sell our honor, our integrity, and our solid values to the highest bidder. What kind of precedent will our town be setting if the Select Board takes money to enter into an agreement that amounts to buying a variance of our town plan's clearly written community standard? I hope you will consider the strength of the town in my position, and realize that there is no rush to decide at all for the near future. Thank you again for giving me the chance to speak my mind.
Thank you very much for coming in. So I would invite Bill up next, but Bill, Laura, Diane, and Mary, we did have a chance to hear from you last week, so I'm going to ask again, just to be concise. Thank you.
I am Bill Knight. I'm the president of the Apple Hill Homeowners Association. Excuse me. Some of what I'm going to say right away is, you've heard it before, but we thought it's important for people to hear it again, because this, I've been involved with this project from day one, and we think part of the reason we're so object to this is the way it was presented or not presented to us. I think it was unethical and immoral. It didn't address the quality of our lifestyle in Apple Hill. I had heard that there might be a project on Willow Road, but I heard nothing about being a project in Apple Hill. And one morning, early, four years ago, I received a phone call from an elderly gentleman, was the man who, he didn't even use the phone, he had his neighbor call me, that he said there are trespassers down here, they've got trucks and heavy equipment, and they say they're going to cut my trees down. And I thought, well, I'll come down and check it out. But I never thought that was exactly what I'd find. However, when I did get there, that's exactly what I found. It was two or three trucks, a couple of heavy machinery, man sitting, all ready to cut through at the end of Russet Drive. And I identified myself, and asked him what he was doing. And he said that he was going to cut a road through there to connect another road for a solar project. And I said, "Well, I think you've got the..." And I said, well, I think you've got the wrong spot. There's no solar project here. I think you should be on Willow Road. So he went and made a phone call, never got back with me, but made the call, got in the trucks, and they all left, and I thought it was just a mistake. But it wasn't evidently. About three months later, I was on vacation with my grandsons back home, and I got a phone call that I was supposed to call a real estate agent here in town. So I did, and she said that there'd been some land sold in Apple Hill, and I needed to hurry up and sign a certificate of public good. This was Thursday, I remember. And she said, and you've got to have this signed and back here on Saturday so we can close the deal. And I said, oh, I don't even know what a certificate of public good is, and I've never signed anything of that nature. Why do I have to sign that? And she said, well, it's because this is commercial. And I said, no, it can't be commercial. Apple Hill is strictly residential. And I said, well, what is this business? And she said, well, I can't tell you. They're keeping it close to the vest, which I didn't believe at the time that that's what it was. But anyway, she said, well, I'm going to tell you right now, if you don't sign this, there could be legal action against you. And I said, well, you've got to do what you've got to do, but I don't care. I'm not signing anything that would allow commercial in Apple Hill. It's all residential. So when I got back, right away, I was on Peter Lawrence's front porch on that Sunday explaining to him what had happened. And he said, well, I don't know, we'll check into it. And so shortly after, we found that there was going to be a solar project over the end connecting us, that they had bought the land across some Libby's, but they were going to use that to get to their land for the solar project. Now, the downfall to all of that is that they felt like the fact that they owned this property, it gave them to write, the right, excuse me, to use our roads for commercial. And they were going to, of course, originally cut 27 acres of trees and use our roads for commercial. We have a nice community up there, there's no through road. We obviously didn't want those roads to be used for that purpose. So to try to make this short, we went through several meetings with Mr. Wilson. We had phone calls, emails, went on and on and on trying to fight this to stop it. Well, eventually, we went through the state and everyone, and we were unable, we thought, to stop this project completely. So in order to just come out as good as we could, we eventually signed a memorandum of understanding with ALCO that said that they would only use our roads for probably three times a month for mowing in a small truck, not big trucks, and they would use Willow Road for the other. So we did that just to save what we could for our little community, to have safe streets so our children could ride bicycles, we'd walk dogs, and, you know, have a nice view of the monument and so forth. But then, that brings us to this point where Libby is now also trying to stop this project. And we have all tried to stop it, of course. We're not against solar, you've heard that 1,000 times. We just think it's in the wrong place. It's not a good place, it's probably the worst possible place for Bangton County. I know they say it's, now that they have a smaller revised version, about 40% smaller, it won't be seen by the monument or the welcome center. I don't know if that's true or not, but I know last year, according to what a gentleman said here a few weeks ago from the Chamber of Commerce, that 250,000 people visited our welcome center last year. That's a lot of tourism right there. And I don't think they want to see solar panels. They're not coming to Vermont for solar panels. They're coming here for the beauty. That's the one thing I think Vermont has more than anything else, is its scenic beauty. That's why I came here. I chose this area over big cities and that type of thing. It's not, it's not a good project, it's in a rural conservation area, it shouldn't be allowed there. And who's to say if this, hopefully this smaller project goes through, how do you know it's not going to increase? They're not going to apply for more certificate of public good or what have you and make it even bigger? I don't know if there's any guarantee on that or not. But it's not a preferred site. I know Mr. Malone has said that it's a prime location for solar based on the VCRC maps, but I know Mr. Solomon has said that those maps are not to be used for development, those maps are only used to say where there's good sunlight, not a lot of shade. It's not necessarily, it's not meant to be for development. I think Rick will cover some more of that later. And there are probably 500 acres, I think they said, the siding committee that could be used for solar. So why use that area up there? As Libby said, the town's been offered 200,000, which isn't a lot. 200,000 really isn't a lot. I mean, if you put that into perspective, I think the Apple Hill homeowners, this is just my approximation, we probably pay collectively 150,000 a year in property taxes. So, you know, we deserve some kind of consideration when it comes to our quality of lifestyle up there. I know also, Mr. Malone has said that he thinks Libby and the rest of us in Apple Hill are practicing NIMBYism. NIMBYism, for those of you who don't have your thesaurus with you, the NIMBY is not in my backyard. In other words, saying that we just don't want it there. Well, we don't, I think most people practice NIMBYism in the fact that they don't want prisons or toxic waste or airports or anything that's either dangerous to their family or it decreases the value of their homes. In some cases, maybe you should practice NIMBYism. If Kemfab, if someone had looked at that about 40 years ago, maybe we wouldn't be in this PFOA problem. That's another situation that Apple Hill's in the middle of right now. Our wells are all contaminated, so just one more thorn in our side that we're trying to take care of right now. So, as I said, they have made it, they said it's a smaller project, but if it's wrong, it's still, if it doesn't meet the town plan, so what if it's smaller? I mean, cop says you're doing, you know, you say, doing 80 miles an hour in a school zone, you say you're only doing 70, you're still breaking the law. I mean, it's just a play on words if you make it smaller, but I just hope that this project doesn't go through, and I hope that we understand, if you're voting on this project, are we voting? No, we, you're voting on the first project or this next project, the smaller one that they have submitted? I just wonder if, do you know exactly what you're voting on? And I'm not saying you don't, but I'm just curious. So I just hope that the vote doesn't go that way. Even if it's a smaller project, it's in the wrong place. It doesn't meet the town plan. It's not good for tourism, even if they say it's going to be screened. Screening is not our big issue, or actually, the wind and noise is not as big an issue as the fact that it is in the wrong place, it doesn't meet the town plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've got a question for you. I've spoken with many of the Apple Hill gang, and I mean that as a term of endearment.
Thank you.
You described, and I'd like for you to tell the general public some of the ill treatment that you got at the hands of the Malones.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I'd like you to describe some of the ill treatment that you and other members of the Apple Hill gang got at the hands of the Malones.
But I will caution you that we're, you know, in terms of slander and name-calling and whatnot, let's keep it decent, please.
Just stick to facts. Facts, you know, are stubborn things.
Well, you know, obviously, it's been said that we were just practicing, you know, NIMBYism, that we didn't want it there, that it's good for the town. We think it's not good for the town. We talk about being offered 200,000. We were actually, I was talked to by one of the representatives and said that they would compensate the homeowners association if we would go along and support their project. And we said, there's really nothing that would compensate that, we don't want the project. And we would just been, I hate to use the word lied to, but some of the things, we had site visits and some of the things they told us, trees they were going to cut down, then they said they weren't cutting down. I hate to get into a lot of this that's hearsay. I don't want to say things that he said, she said, so.
All right, well, that, you know, in fairness to the Malones and Brad, that doesn't sound like ill treatment, you know, frankly. So I think that needs to be said unless you have anything that directly contradicts that.
I can't think of anything at this moment. I'm sure some of the other people.
Yeah, we have 12 other people would like to get in if, I don't want to give you the hook prematurely, Bill, but if you're feeling like you're almost at a stopping point, I'd love to maybe.
Yeah, I think I'm at a stopping point, let some of the other people talk.
Would people object horribly if I set a five-minute timer?
Yes.
So that means we're not going to get everybody in tonight, which means we probably should go, we should probably change the order of things.
You mean five minutes per person?
Yeah, five minutes per person, I was thinking. We're, you know, we're 35 minutes.
Energy had a long, long time. It would only be fair for us to be able to speak our piece.
Are there only one of the people you are?
I understand. I'm looking for, I'm looking for a, some way of trying to help keep people on track here a little bit.
Yeah, let's stay.
Okay, all right, all right. If you could all be concise, I'll ask you again, if you could be concise, that'd be great. Thank you.
Did they ask at the last meeting how the process would go, and you said that it would be too long? The last meeting was almost too long.
Yeah, so what we've done is to, Mary, what we've done is to adapt the process a little bit here to sort, what I've done is to try to give the Apple Hill folks a chance to all come on. Many of them have already spoken at once, but I'm happy to have the gang come up. So as you say, come on up and please try to be concise. Thank you, Bill, for coming. So Laura?
Do you have the people who gathered, who spoke from the development, come on first? You didn't just say come on to the development.
I'm sorry, I don't know who on this list is from the development and who is not. So let's just forge ahead, and again, if you can be concise, it will help me get other people in, please. So come on up, Laura and Bob, and yeah, see if you can give us the nub of your concerns.
We have a chart. We have, we have, what is this called? Visuals. Is that going to stand?
Visual A.
Actually, what I have here is a big one, and this is handouts for everybody.
Thank you.
Because we thought maybe this is something for the audience. There are extras there of the same thing that can be passed around to the audience. And I'm sorry if it doesn't stand up here. At least I can just hold it.
Do you want to hold it, and then I'll hold your stuff?
Okay.
I don't know if you guys see this. We just.
Yeah.
They have handouts of the same thing, and I just gave away my own copy. I'm sorry.
I was going to do.
Everything.
This is, this is like neuroscience here or something, but actually, I'll explain what this is. I'm Laura Block. I appreciate the time, having the chance to come back again to address you. I'm going to try not to repeat what has already been said. Bottom line, I'm here to support everything that Libby said and urge you to uphold the meaning and the integrity of the town plan as the Public Service Board sections that Libby read, which was, were upheld by the Supreme Court. But what I have here is something that we in Apple Hill, Joe Shonig primarily did this, because we have been spending hours and hours and hours trying to figure out what the, all the possible scenarios, what ifs, how is all of this going? And I assume that maybe you all have other lives and have not needed to spend as much time as we have. And I really sympathize with what this position that you as Select Board members are in. Years ago, I served on the zoning board and I was a member of the BSD, and I know what it's like when you're on a board, there are many issues coming at you, many people demanding things of you, and you're in a tough position, which I think, I sympathize with, I sympathize with your position of being forced basically by ALCO to weigh a tough decision. How much are you going to support our town plan versus how much are you going to exceed or agree with them that you need to settle and negotiate and take money? So I understand that you have a lot of thinking about this. And so I thought that when we figured out where all of this is going and what's happening to these two projects, it would be helpful if you had a copy too. So what we have here is that there are two projects. There's Chelsea, which is the one that's been denied, that's at the Supreme Court. Then there's Apple Hill, which is at the Public Service Board. And each one of those has decisions that are in the process of being made. And basically, what ALCO is asking you to do is to undercut the processes on these two state levels, the Supreme Court and the Public Service Board, and not let them proceed as they would ordinarily by negotiating and agreeing to pull out. That's what they're asking the town to do. So what do we, what this is showing here is that if the public, if you see the PSB, the Public Service Board, and then you see these two arrows, this is Chelsea, which has been denied, this is Apple Hill, which is in process at the Public Service Board. So what happens to each one of these? What's happening? Chelsea is now, as Libby said, you know, it's under appeal at the Supreme Court. So the Supreme Court is going to proceed. There are, as Libby said, there are three parties to this that are defending the appeal against, that ALCO is making. There's the town, you are in it, we are in it on the part of the town, as Libby read you, the, oh, I'm sorry. As Libby read, the town attorney has already put his docket statement in saying, we're in at this point, the town. Libby is in and the Public Service Department are in. So this Supreme Court case is in process. And so what can they do? What might the typical, what might be the outcomes of the public, of, at the Supreme Court? So those arrows up above here, it could, these are what could happen. The Supreme Court could support us, support Libby, and could say that the denial by the Public Service Board was appropriate, and it, and there's, then that is the death sentence for Chelsea. Right now, Chelsea is not really dead, it's kind of on life support at the Supreme Court because it depends on how the Supreme Court goes. So we are waiting to find out whether the Supreme Court will decide that it's dead or they, what else could happen? As Rob Wilmington himself mentioned at the prior Select Board meeting, he was saying, well, another possibility would be that it would be remanded back to the Public Service Board because the Supreme Court might have thought that there were some mistakes that were made in the process. So they would have it be reheard. I don't know whether it would be the whole thing that would have to be reheard or just parts. You know, they can decide that there were certain mistakes that were made and want parts of it reheard. So that is my understanding of what remanding back would be. Or, as ALCO I'm sure would wish, the whole denial could be overturned. So there are three possible outcomes at the Supreme Court. So I can understand why ALCO wants us, the town, to pull out. That means all the ammunition is taken away, almost all of it. The town has, will now be saying, whoops, never mind. We don't really feel that the town plan is, needs to be defended, as I would say, that we changed our mind and we are willing to... I would say, "that, um, we changed our mind and we are willing to go along with pulling out of the Supreme Court case." I am not an attorney, so I don't know what happens at that point, except that we've removed all of our ammo, most of our ammunition, which is the town, leaving Libby to defend and the Public Service Department to defend. Now, as I understand it, the role of the Public Service Department's attorney is to defend the actions of the Public Service Board, and we have been told that they will, we already know that they will defend it. So we have a very good attorney, as Libby has said, at the Public Service Department, who is going to fight this case for us. Why would we, as a town, pull out? Why? I can see why ALCO wants us to do that. I think they're desperate, because they are seeing that if they lose, this is my hypothesis, if they lose the appeal at the Supreme Court, that is going to be more likely, that will affect probably Apple Hill. Because Apple Hill, this is the next thing down here, Apple, Apple Hill is at the Public Service Board. So where is that now? All the papers have been filed. As I understand it, the town's filings, our attorney has filed everything that's needed. Libby has filed all of her papers. We are simply waiting for the decision by the Public Service Board, which could be at any time. Why would we pull out from Apple Hill? Why would the town sign and negotiate to pull out of that case when, without knowing how the Public Service Department, uh, Public Service Board, rather, is going to decide? I can understand why ALCO is breathing down your neck to sign and shut up, that's my interpretation, uh, because I think, as I said, I think they're desperate. They need us to get out of their way. So the question is, will you? That's really how I see the decision here, uh, because the Supreme, these, these outcomes here, and what I've done, what I've just been describing is all of these timelines here, this is what the Public Serv-, these are the, the choices that the Pub-, the Select Board has, as I see it right now. You can vote at some point, maybe it's not going to be tonight, but you can decide to vote to not sign any negotiated settlement, that you are not going to pull out. You could, uh, sign that, a negotiated settlement and pull out. Or you can let these two processes, both at the Public Service Board and at the Supreme Court, have their natural life, lifespan, and let those two state agencies, the court and the Public Service Board, hear these cases out, and, um, then there will be a time when the, the steps or the responses by the town can be decided after we know what really needs to be decided. So I am asking that my first choice for the town, for your response of these three choices, would be to decide not to negotiate, because as Libby said, and we, I think all of our, all of the folks in Apple Hill, and there are many others who are sitting here who don't live in Apple Hill, that have come to support us because they are aware that this is not just an Apple Hill decision, it's a town-wide decision, because what you do here is setting a precedent for the whole town. It's, it's not just about Apple Hill. So the first choice that I would urge on you is to vote not to negotiate. The second possibility, if you want to just let things ride, is to wait at least until this, uh, Supreme Court decision comes down, until the Public Service Board makes its decision, and that will also give the process, um, ti-, the local process time to get the citing, the solar citing committee's report approved. I'm still wondering where that is. I sat in on those meetings of the solar citing committee, I know it's been finished, I know it's, I, but I don't know where it is. My understanding is that it needs to go to the town attorney and then it needs to go to the Pe-, uh, Planning Board and then the Select Board, but we're waiting for that, and it, and that will be another real, um, protection for the town plan. So I'm urging that to be moved along, and, um, this will, this, if anybody finds it useful, it helped us straighten out our minds because we were going around in circles trying to figure out what is going on and what are the next steps. So, we're leaving that to you.
One second. Dan, can you give us an update on, uh, the progress of the ordinance that we developed?
Sure. I would like to know if the bill has no variance case, because he was talking about that. Um, Rob Wilmington has recently reviewed it, has suggested changes to be made, and will be keeping that along with the, uh, commitment to the town, like, the empty section probably next couple of years.
Thank you.
Don?
Uh, go ahead, Jean.
I just want to make sure that it's clear, probably mostly for myself and maybe some fellow Select Board members, the two, um, sites that are, are being litigated now are not the revised plan, they're the original-
That's true.
Okay.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure.
And to be accurate, there's no litigation per se for Apple Hill, that's just under the routine-
The normal course of events. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that people understood it's not the new revised plan, it's the original-
Yeah, well, and those revised plans are just hypothetical right now. They haven't been filed anywhere, they exist as a dangle to the town. Uh, what you agree to will have to be under negotiation, I think. Uh, that's another su-, that's another issue. So, thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work you've put into this, we appreciate that.
Oh, this was so much fun, Joe did bring-
So, uh-
Did anybody want me to leave it up here?
So we've, we've, we've worked our way through three presenters here, um, and we're almost been at it for an hour here, but, so really I'm going to implore everybody to please try to get to the nub of what they have to say first. Uh, and Diane, why don't you come up, please, and then we'll have Mary on deck.
I, I have the floor, I'm sorry. I'm Bob Block, also from Apple Hill, and I have a much, um, more condensed issue, and, um, for me, it's the problem of the roads. Um, I'm here to review with the, with the boards, a serious problem of entry and exit to the proposed solar projects. I'm even willing to throw in the, um, new revised version. Um, as you recall, ALCO about four years ago, uh, seriously, um, had to change course. Their, their plan initially was to have a mega site. Uh, this, uh, was, uh, illegal, uh, from the perspective of the state. Uh, they want small solar, and, uh, so the, um, uh, first Supreme Court ruling on that was that they could have two separate, um, two separate, um, sites in the same area, but walled off from each other and would have to have their own exit and entry. And, um, the, uh, that was the birth of the Chelsea and Apple Hill product, uh, projects as we've seen. Uh, ALCO did agree and submitted plans for the, uh, Willow Road as one entrance and Apple Hill Road as the other. The Apple Hill Road is a small road, not suitable for, uh, major construction, as was pointed out earlier. The, uh- We negotiated that with ALCO, who agreed to send construction vehicles via the Upper Willow Road and only maintenance pickups once a month or twice a month if necessary to the Apple Hill Road area. Fast forward to the present, ALCO has showed us, shown us the new and improved plan. The plan has only one road. Willow Road will carry all of the construction and maintenance traffic. Uh, and the question, um, I, um, have is, um, have any of you walked Willow Road recently? Do you know what it looks like? It's an unimproved gravel road, eight feet and wide, it's a path now, it's all overgrown with grass and weeds. It'll require intense remediation, which will more than double the width and considerably fill will be necessary to allow heavy construction vehicles to, um, uh, make, uh, the entrance to either so, uh, either of the solar projects. This will, uh, this activity will occur just across Route 7 from the, um, Visitor Center and in plain sight of Bennington Monument and the bypass. Uh, in walking this, uh, yet, this morning, uh, I was able to clearly see all of these, um, as you walk along Willow Road, and as they raise it up with new fill, as they're going to have to do, and all of this is going to be in plain sight of all of these, and I will show you some pictures. Unfortunately, I can't, I can't connect with my connections to the, uh, to the, um, uh, big screen, but I can show it on my computer. Uh, the, um, so what are we left with? Uh, the, um, reconstruction of Willow Road and destruction of the nice path we have there as we know it will, um, still lead to a single entrance and access road serving the two projects, despite ALCO's fork in the road, and as it enters the array, um, it does split, but this is not what they're talking about. The, uh, the requirement is there'd be two separate roads for safety purposes, both for the, uh, project and for, um, uh, the community. Uh, it's a question of fire, uh, there've been problems with, uh, uh, solar arrays, and you have to have access to them, and this does not give access in any, um, appropriate way. The, moreover, the shaping of, the shaping of Willow Road will damage the beautiful forest land and milkweed, there's a milkweed garden right at the entrance of the, um, Willow Road. It was full of monarch, monarch butterfly's this, um, this morning. So, I urge you to work with ALCO to convince them to place the solar where it belongs, which is, um, the town, um, citing plan, uh, that we, we, um, worked on very hard, ready for review and activation, would show that a mile down Houghton Lane, the transfer station, there are many, many acres available to put up solar panels, much more room than they would have with Chelsea and, uh, with, uh, Apple Hill, and it's level. They don't have to take out any trees. They could easily move their place to, uh, their, their home down the street, and nobody would object to that, and it's going to be on the plan. So I would ask the town of Bennington to, uh, to accept, uh, accept the project only if it's moved, uh, off, uh, and out of our area. Anybody wants to see, uh, I can show you the pictures of the-
Bob, if you don't mind, I'd like to try to move along here a little bit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Okay.
If anybody wants to come over and-
Perhaps you could pass them around or do something like that, if-
Yeah, fine.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to rush that. Thank you for bringing those pictures. Diane, please come up and give us your thoughts.
Um, my name is Diana Leeser, and I'm a resident of Bennington and Apple Hill. Okay. Jim Sullivan, Director of the BRCRC, and Rick Carroll spoke about a year ago regarding the need for Bennington to develop a solar citing plan determining where the town and its citizens wanted solar arrays and where they didn't, and that's exactly what they did. It was discussed that the solar citing plan had to be part of the town plan. Jim, Director of the BRCRC, could then adopt it into the BRCRC Energy Maps and Plan. Having these plans would help to ensure each town in Bennington County would have a voice in solar citing and also ensure the BRCRC map was complete and correct. To this point, the Solar Citing Committee, which consists of Mary Morrissey, Jim Carroll, Don Campbell, Michael Keane, and Rick Carroll, all of whom were appointed by the Select Board in addition to Dan Monks, worked for months to develop a preferred solar citing plan for Bennington. This is it, and as you can see on the bottom, it says, "This parcel highlighted above totals over four, 570 acres," which does not include Apple Hill or Chelsea Solar Projects. As you will be able to see, if you look at the map, we, which we can scroll out for you, Apple Hill and Chelsea Solar Projects are clearly not on the preferred citing map. Sorry for the rustle here. Additionally, because the process of moving the solar subcommittee plan along has been so excruciatingly delayed, the plan hasn't been adopted and it has, was not included in the BRCRC's Bennington County Renewable Energy Map and Plan. Jim Sullivan said at a recent townwide meeting before the Department of Public Service that the BRCRC maps are not intended to be used to cite individual projects. During conversations with Jim and at the townwide meeting, citizens have made it clear that if he submitted the BRCRC Energy Plan and Map prior to the town's solar citing plan being adopted, solar developers would use his map as their guide for solar citing energy projects. That is exactly what has happened, and it puts all towns in Bennington County in a terrible position. In a recent email, ALCO, Echols, and the Malones have used the BRCRC map to say that Apple Hill and Chelsea Solar Sites are indeed designated prime solar by the BRCRC, and this is the map that was included in that recent email. This is exactly why any discussion about the citing of any solar project should be tabled until the town adopts its own solar citing map and plan, and the BRCRC puts the town's solar citing map in its proper place within their plan. Right now, I'm not sure who's in charge of solar citing in Bennington. The BRCRC, the solar developer, the Bennington Select Board, or the Bennington Citing Subcommittee? Right now, it seems that more so the solar developers are in charge. With the adoption of our Energy Subcommittee's map and language, the town of Bennington will be in the lead, not the developer. Reducing the Chelsea and Apple Hill solar footprint does not make it comply with Bennington's own town plan, which is clear written community standard as it was interpreted and updated by the, the Public Service Board in its denial of the Chelsea Solar Project. The town should not deny the intent of its own plan, it will hold up its vaula. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so I don't, I don't want to bristle, but I, I will say, we have worked very hard, right, Jim? And Mary Morrissey's been part of this and a number of other people to try to push this thing through, and I hope people will be happy with it, but most of these Select Board members have not seen any bit of it yet, so it's really still in the draft phase at this point. It's, it's getting legal review and then it's coming to us, but Mary, thank you for coming up.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, my name is Mary Morrissey. I am speaking to you this evening as a member of our Town's Renewable Energy Citing Committee that was appointed nearly three years ago by the Select Board. The original committee was made up of the Select Board members Jim Carroll, Don Campbell, and John McFadden, with Rick Carroll and myself and Dan Monks. We worked very hard to articulate what the town of Bennington wanted to have in place for rules and guidelines for developers to, of proposed renewable energy projects here in our region. We accomplished this in a process that took nearly a year to complete, with the end result including in a new town ordinance and- including in a new town ordinance and added very clear language to Bennington's energy policy within our town plan. This process was completed by review of our proposed language and intent by our town attorney, Rob Wilmington, a hearing with a unanimous approval of the Planning Commission, and two public hearings before the Bennington Select Board, resulting in a unanimous vote for approval. Since then, a number of towns in the state have looked to our policy as a guidance in producing their own energy policy. I hear that often in Montpelier from my legislative colleagues. Our Subcommittee was reorganized in November of 2016 pursuant to Act 174 legislation. Our committee is comprised of, once again, of Jim Carroll, Dan Camp, Don Campbell, Michael Keane, Rick Carroll, Dan Monks, and myself. Again, we have worked very hard to formulate a renewable energy siding map for the town of Bennington with intent language to ultimately be the companion piece to our Bennington County Regional Commission Energy Planning Standards. Act 174 was specifically passed in the legislature to give towns in a region a strong voice with deferential preference to their plans in regards to where and how renewable energy projects would develop in, in an area. Our committee has worked since January, meeting often, sometimes weekly, to develop these documents. I am pleased and quite honestly proud that our committee unanimously voted three weeks ago to approve our siding map with companion language. I am further proud to say that our plan has identified 570 acres of preferred sites in Bennington for solar siding. The 570 acres is over double the amount that our town responsibility to attain our state required energy goals. I must clearly state that our siding map and language does not include Apple Hill and Chelsea Solar Projects as sites for development. This is based upon our town plan, which specifically says that this type of commercial, industrial, solar cannot be, be developed on zone rural conservation lands. As I stated, three weeks ago, our Subcommittee unanimously approved our map with language with a timeline of the approved process set. First, the documents would be reviewed by our town attorney. We were given that information, I asked earlier in the, before the meeting started, from Dan Monks, that that has been done and Rob Wilmington has approved what we have presented Then we review, for the town attorney to review our plan. Then it goes before the Planning Commission for approval, then setting the public hearings with you, the Select Board, for final approval. We were told by Dan Monks that this process would bring us into possibly mid to end of August. We would then have to get approval by the Department of Public Service or by the BCRC. Dan also stated that Jim Sullivan, Executive Director of BCRC, thought that we had done very good work and that, and that there appeared to be no reason that this would not be approved in a timely manner. He also stated that he hoped that other towns in our county would follow our proactive, due diligent process to comply with Act 174. Unfortunately, today, until this evening, our Subcommittee had not heard of anything that was going on with the process from the three weeks ago. We are obviously looking to want this process to go forward, to approve what we've done and what we've worked very hard for. In the meantime, the Malones have referenced the BCRC maps as why their proposed Apple Hill and Chelsea project should be developed. Jim Sullivan has stated clearly several times that the BCRC maps represent, including at a Public Service Hearing here in this very building a couple of weeks ago, as well in a recent email, and I will read from the email. "The regional plan maps, as noted in my previous email, only illustrations of a siding process, not siding maps. They include all of the mapping requirements contained in the Department of Public Services' published standards for regional plan maps and nothing more, other than the legally established districts as noted. Our regional plan specifically defers to town plans that include more detailed local constraints to development." I do hope that it is just a coincidence that it appears that all of these backroom discussions and a little bit of the delay of our process are happening at this time. I hope not in order to favor or not favor this development going forward.
Mary, what do you mean background or backroom discussions?
Well, all the, well, I'll, I'm saying, all the discussions that are going on, whether they've been at the Select Board, whether it's been folks from Apple, or from the Apple Hill Association, all the different, whether it's the Malones and all the negotiating they're doing, there is definitely, you know, some discussions going on. And I would hope that, you know, we could get back to business and what we.
Well, in fairness to this board, Mary, I'm not aware, and I hope the rest of the board members here will say that I'm not aware of any backroom discussions of any kind. Is that true, fellow board member?
But, but the point's well taken. We, should, none of us be doing backroom discussions.
I am respectfully requesting that this Select Board hold off this decision on this matter before us till the town's Energy Subcommittee Siding Map and Language is approved in order for our town to have the deferential preference, as was the legislative intent of Act 174. I'm also respectfully requesting that the Select Board uphold the integrity of our town plan, which many of the legal decisions of the Public Service Board have been based upon thus far. I do thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. I would just probably make one last note. I am very concerned that if our town plan is not upheld, future development in Bennington will likely go to the highest bidder to get a variance on their project. And I do hope that does not happen because it's not a good way to conduct business for our town.
Thank you, Mary.
I'd just like to clarify, I was in no way maligning the committee or the work that they've done. It appeared because of the slowness of the, of the adoption of the plan from when it was unanimously approved to tonight, when we just heard that it had been reviewed by Rob Wilmington. That had the appearance of stolen.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to be defensive.
No, you guys have done terrific work. That was my point, not anything else.
Okay, thanks. I need to ask a process question of the board here. So we are at the end of the period of time we set aside to talk about this. We've gotten through four people. I, I did invite Libby Harris to talk at length because I, I felt like she had a, you know, sort of a special perspective on this. What is the pleasure of the board?
How many people are waiting to speak?
We, we have 10 people. We've been through four, we have 10 left. And.
We've, we've agreed to another meeting on the hearing of this.
Well, I guess the question is, and everybody's here, you know, can we push on for another half, 45 minutes? What, it's going to be another late meeting, but.
Well, is there, are there things we can move to another meeting?
That's a good idea.
So Stuart, is there anything we can do in the, in terms, can we, first of all, can we change the agenda at this point in the meeting? Can we push stuff off?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
But, I mean, the folks from Maplewood are here and they have really a legitimate question to ask of the board.
Mm-hmm.
I would not encourage pushing them off again.
Okay.
Charter Review Committee appointments, we need to move on that.
Yes, we do.
I think we're ready to move on that. The bond must be done tonight.
That will be quick.
And so, you know, it leaves the manager's report, which isn't much of anything.
Okay.
So I think if we push on.
Looks like Tom's unrecusing for that.
Yeah, I'm unrecusing for the agenda purposes. As you said, anything can be moved with the consent of the board. The only thing of critical concern, at some point, we do have to get a Charter Review Committee appointment done, but there is no reason why that cannot be extended to the next meeting. The next meeting, okay. Which gives folks a chance to come back from vacations and the like and still keep a timeline. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, so that, that would gain us a little bit. How about if we go for another half an hour with this subject? Maplewood people, I'm sorry, if you'd be willing to wait for half an hour, we, we could get you on a little bit later.
Don, I think it would be helpful if we confined remarks per person to five minutes and that's, there's somebody who's a keeper of time. And I would do it, but my phone is dead.
Watches, they still exist.
Watches.
All right. So, yeah, I'm terrible at this because I, but let's, let's go ahead and give half an hour. So I really would like everybody, I'm going to ask one last time, to really get to the nub of what you have to say so that we can get everybody in. Are there other people, this has all been from the neighborhood, are there other people from the immediate neighborhood that have anything to add to that presentation? Okay, so.
Yeah, I'd like to make one suggestion, and that is, if you speak less than five minutes or if you can confine it to less than five minutes, yield your time to other people that would like to speak.
Can I just ask, because I'll be very.
So Ken and Anna, come on up, why don't you please? And was there one other person over here? We are from the neighborhood also? Two more, three more? Okay.
My name is Ken Swerdt. I've been living on Apple Hill for 40 years, most of my life, to be honest. And this past winter, and I'm speaking about something different nobody spoke about yet, with the wind study this gentleman did last week, or two weeks ago, who said that he did a big study on Apple Hill and he figured two to three miles would be an increase with the clear cut. Well, back in January, Velco came, they have a right of way where the transmission lines come up through my property, my driveway, and they came and clear cut everything. I mean, really right down, you could stand at one end and see Husick Falls, New York. It was really something. And we had this big snowstorm that came, I think we had about 18 inches of snow. And I've lived there 40 years and never had this problem until they clear cut. And when they came in, I had about 18 inches of snow in the morning and my plow guy came in and he plowed me out and I thought everything was great. That wind was blowing. Next morning, I got up, another foot of snow there. No new snow, but it just blew because of all the clear cutting. Plow guy came in, cleaned me up. The next day, another blowing and I had another foot of snow. So when these gentlemen tell you that I've done a study and it's a simulation, that's the key word, a simulation, I've got a real one here where my thing came back, 12 inches the next day, 12 inches the next day. So clear cutting has an adverse effect. I don't see my, my deer on the property anymore. I don't see my rabbits on the property anymore. I only see a woodchuck coming in from underneath the rocks. It didn't bother him, but the animals are gone as well. So if these people want to come in and clear cut the neighborhood, even 10 acres, 12 acres, it's going to be terrible because, again, it was east to west. The, the breeze came in from New York and over. That's one thing. The other thing, back in the 70s, Vermont banned the billboards because they were ugly and took away from the beauty of the Vermont countryside. And that's why solar is so important with location. Now, we have a nice solar array behind NasTech. I have probably, a lot of people in town don't even know it's there because it's in the right location. And again, someone's mentioned 500-plus acres of prime place that they could put these solar panels. And I think if they would, you know, roll up their sleeves and do the right thing for the community, and again, we stress the community, not just Apple Hill, this would work. And again, I hate to say this part, but I wrote it this afternoon. "A few years ago, the Walmart Plaza owner paid a group of Bennington citizens to drop their concern about this new store being built. Now Brad and his group are willing to pay the town off if they receive a neutral reaction from the Board of Selectmen." What if a major chain wanted to move into Bennington, hire a few hundred workers, but the location was not enough permitted for their building? And the town was offered, say, $200,000, magic number. Would that be allowed? I mean, we've had, this would be a second precedence and we could go for a third one.
One second. Let's be clear that, you know, with respect to Walmart, they didn't buy us off.
Not you.
Let's, yeah, Ken, can we?
I only go by reading the paper. I don't hear anything firsthand. I just read that they be a group of people.
Impact fees is a whole nother, so impact fees for development is very common around the state, so it's a whole nother conversation. If we could maybe not go into that tonight, that'd be great. I mean, Manchester uses them all the time. Bennington chooses not to, but.
Okay. Two more small things. Apple Hill pays around $200,000 in property taxes. I'm the treasurer for the last 20 years and, you know, I think we contribute a lot to the community. Take a ride sometime, my roads are full of potholes and everything, they're not the best. And in just, 1968, I answered my country's call to serve in Vietnam. I hope you hear the call of the citizens of Bennington and not allow this project to move forward. If you need more time for simulated wind studies or anything else, I think it'd be worth your while to do.
Thank you. So Anna, come on up and we're still in the neighborhood here.
I'm going to be very brief.
Thank you.
I'm Anna. I was a Kinney, I was born in Bennington. So I have over 60-plus years invested in this town. And I have to tell you, since a child, I've seen the agricultural die-off. I've seen so much happening to our town and I am begging you to please remember what Bennington is all about. And please don't let them put it in that site, which is a rural conservation area. We are known for our luscious mountains, our trees, our beautiful monument, and let's uphold those traditions. And please, don't do it. That's all I'm asking. Please, don't.
Love the phrase, luscious mountains. Okay, so who else from the neighborhood? Again, we're still in the Apple Hill neighborhood.
Hello, my name is Joe Schoneg. I'm, I'll make this as quick as I can for you. I have some concerns about the project in general. I'll cut through a bunch of things and go to the specifics. I've heard a number of, heard from a number of people that are in favor of this specific project at the current location, that it's worthless forest land. Worthless is an ignorant statement at best. The trees present are comprised of oaks, maples, white birch, hickory, several distant, different species of pine, black cherry, apple, and poplar. It's comprised of mainly immature trees, 20 to 30 years old, but there are a number of very old trees there. One, for sure, may be close to 300 years old. The span of my arms won't do anything to the diameter of that. And when I think of historic Bennington and I think of putting solar panels in it, it just crushes me to think that that's going to be cut down for some panels. Anyway, those trees that are there provide a wind noise barrier, provide carbon filtration system, provides cooler temperature in the summer months, whether you realize it or not. When I was walking out there today, I walked out through the, through the field, through the orchard, and it was pretty hot and I was perspiring. And I got into the woods, it's nice and cool, you know? So it has that effect. You know, that's why people plant trees near their houses, to cool the house. It's the homeland for many insects, reptiles, birds, and animals. Among these are the monarch butterflies, the frogs, turtles, there's red-tailed hawks that are in there, turkeys, rabbits, fox, coyote, deer, and a bear. And I've seen all of them there and it's beautiful. One concern I have about the fencing that's being put up for the two solar projects is that fencing is being put up to prevent vandalism to the panels.
Say it again.
The fencing, the 10-foot-high fencing that is being put up by the solar companies is being put to protect the panels from damage by vandalism. And they're hanging some fabric on them that will help to cut down the vision of what's in there. Okay? That's a wonderful thing. However, by doing that, what's going to happen is they're going to eliminate a free passing of the wildlife in there. They're going to put it in closer proximity to the roadways and highways that are there. And you stand a much. highways that are there, and you stand a much better chance of an animal going out and a car or vehicle crashing into it. So, be aware of that, for one thing, okay? Their fence is great, can't see it, but what's it gonna do to the animals that are there? It's gonna divert them one way or the other. And God knows, you see them on the roads anyway, so if we're making it easier or forcing them out that way, it's gonna have some results. There's an existing wetland that I've found that's not noted on this project, on the design documents, and it basically runs from the cul-de-sac at the end of Bartlett Road at the northern extreme of the Chelsea Project, right down the center of it, going southward into where they now have expanded out the Apple Hill Project, and then continues on its way down to the noted wetland along the highway. So, you know, what I would, I think there's a need for some further investigation by the State Department, or whoever, about the wetland, to see, in fact, whether they can build there or not. There's a, there's a brook in, I have lots of pictures that I'd be happy to show anyone. Maybe they looked at it one time and it wasn't, but according to wetland rules, if, if it's only there, you know, a few weeks out of the year, it can still be considered a wetland. And I know well, because I walk those woods all the time, that it's, it's there all the time. So, another thing I have serious concerns about is how the water runoff from these solar panels is going to be dealt with. I've been in construction, construction management for over fifty years, so I have somewhat of an idea of what's involved in the process. And I really don't see too much in the plans so far for that, but I think it's a real serious concern. Now, you've got an incline to start with, and then you're putting panels, which are going to be on an incline, and when it rains, it's gonna fall directly down, and you're gonna have some serious soil erosion problems there. Perhaps that can be dealt with, but where is it gonna go? Is it gonna go down into that wetland? And if all of that area that is now gonna be in glass is not able to be absorbed by the ground, because it's covering the ground, then you've, you've got the potential for two things: a swamp-like wetland bringing scores of mosquitoes down near the visitor's center, or you've got the potential for highway and roadway flooding. Somebody's gotta be responsible for, for that, or be aware of the fact that that stuff can be coming down there. So, in conclusion, you've already said it, but I was begging you anyway, not to rush into hasty decisions, think of all the ramifications this may have upon us, better yet, follow the criteria that's been set up in our excellent town plan and soon-to-be-adopted preferable sighting map. There are excellent sites within Bennington that offer much more to a builder, and certainly to the town and the visitors coming here. One last thought on this. Comparing something, I, I know we're not, we shouldn't do this, but you have the town landfill, okay? And it's never gonna be a playground for kids, it's never gonna be the Co-op Garden Center. You're not gonna be able to do anything like that, but what a great place to have a solar array. On the other hand, and we all know that, that solar, that trees filter out the carbon in the air, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna remove trees adjacent to the highway, the direction that the wind goes, so that we could put panels in. That are gonna, you know, it's gonna create some electricity, but we're taking the thing that sucks the, the carbon out of the air away from where all the carbon is. So, think that, people.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much for your comments. Other people from the immediate Apple Hill neighborhood?
Hi, I'm Dan Malenborg. I just have some personal thoughts, really, and I'll try to skip over those items that have already been mentioned. We've mentioned Rural Conservation District, and this is from the Land Use and Development Regulations. "The purpose of the Rural Conservation District is to preserve the rural character, scenic landscape, and natural resources of the area while accommodating low-density residential development in a manner that avoids a need for public water supply and public sewer systems." So, that's what rural conservation's supposed to be, in case you haven't read it. Also, this, the Select Board's approval of this project would really have no direct impact on the Public Service Board's or the Supreme Court's decisions. It's really nothing more than an attempt by ALCO to buy some influence, and personally, I don't think that's the way Vermont politics should work. My third item, "The noise from Route 279 from the south side of Apple Hill Road is already high, and it's constant. Trucks use compression braking at all hours to, as they go around the sharp intersection curves. Any noise increase is unacceptable. I invite any of you to my house at five in the morning, come and listen out my window, and you can just hear, it sounds like there's a helicopter right over my house when those trucks compression brake." ALCO's aesthetics representative has stated that the view from the monument would be negligible, but we've all been to the top of the monument. You know that two sets of windows look down on that parcel. Half of those windows will be full of solar panels, as people are, as tourists are looking out into our town. And the other set looks out to New York, so maybe that's where we're trying to send them off to. ALCO's technical representatives have also, I wonder if they've ever revisited sites that they've estimated the wind-noise impacts on to gauge the accuracy of their predictions. I would like to see some third-party assessment to see how accurate the predictions are at past projects that they've estimated noise and wind. Just for example, the wind study they did showed that a twenty-five mile-an-hour breeze would be approximately thirty, would increase approximately thirty percent at their study site to thirty to thirty-four miles an hour. During the winter storms, we know we get sixty-plus mile-an-hour winds here all the time. A thirty percent increase in a sixty-mile-an-hour wind is now hurricane-force. If that is a linear estimate, then, I mean, there's gonna be home damage from that type of winds. And just especially on a personal note, put yourselves in the position of Apple Hill residents. We've undergone increased traffic noise from Route 279, Velco has clear-cut our association common lands several times over the last eight years, we have PFA contamination in our wells, our neighborhood has suffered, and I ask you just to understand that. And finally, I'd just ask that you oppose this bill, continue your opposition. It was the right thing to do then, it's still the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Allison, are you still wanting to speak?
Yeah. I'll be right back.
Thank you.
It's typed and written, so. So, I'm Allison Malenborg, thank you for the opportunity to speak, by the way. I'm a resident and a taxpayer in Bennington, and have been so for twenty years, and I believe that my husband and I have paid more in taxes over that time than the proposed amount you've been offered by Mr. Malone and his company to remain neutral regarding the project. It concerns me that as a town, we are even considering this. Please don't get me wrong, it's extremely important that we take appropriate action towards reducing our carbon footprint and working to save our environment. I agree that remaining dependent on fossil fuels is not sustainable or desirable. It makes me sad when I hear others portray me, my friends, and neighbors as a gang of people who don't care about our environment. Nothing could be further from the truth. But I don't think that we should let our town be bullied by companies who are taking every available green space and using it for their gain. Make no mistake, this is a money-making venture, and we will benefit very little in comparison. While I see that ALCO has tried to address some of the concerns put forth by the town and the Public Service Board, it still does not address the fact that it is located on what is deemed rural conservation land. Now, Mr. Malone would contend that, and argue that the BRC map contends the site is considered prime land. All that means is it's facing in the right direction. It does not, however, mean it's the right space for this particular project, and the idea of clear-cutting twenty-plus acres of land that includes hardwood forests in a rural conservation area makes it a bad idea. Also, it seems rather amusing to me that Mr. Malone is taking this stand. He actually must know exactly how we feel, given that he protested another renewable energy site project a few years ago, the Cape Wind Project on Nantucket Sound. He protested on the basis that this project would affect his viewscape and hurt his property value of his multimillion-dollar beachfront property.
Can we keep it on that?
While we are concerned about the aesthetics effect that this project will have, there are other more pressing concerns, like the wind and noise issues, as well as the proposed site is on the rural conservation area. To you, the members of the Select Board, I urge you to vote no on this project. Affirm your town plan that outlines appropriate areas for solar arrays, honor the integrity of the town language that many of you worked very hard to create. If you don't do so, where are you gonna draw the line? For there are other projects lined up behind this one. By supporting our town plan, Bennington can and will stand out as an example of concerned citizens working together with town officials to support the right project for the right space. Thank you.
Thank you for your words.
We gotta hear from Brad?
Nope. We are going to ask if there's anybody else from the neighborhood, the immediate Apple Hill neighborhood, that, that would like to speak. No? Okay. So, Jim, if you feel like we would need to...
Excuse me, I think you have to go over to the citizens' agenda room for comment.
I'm not finished, Mike, please. I'm, I've got a whole list here I'm working through.
Go ahead.
So, I'd, I'd like to push on and not stop and talk to Brad at this point about this. Can we continue to take comment, or do you...
I think it's, it's necessary for him to answer some pointed questions with respect to some of the things that were said tonight, in particular, with particular respect to the gentleman's observation that there is gonna be significant water runoff, and what plans, if anything, you've done it, to take care of preventing any, any damage. As many, and I've got other questions as well, I don't know about the rest of you members, but I think time is of the essence in asking those questions. Questions should be done now.
What, what would you think about moving through the rest of the people that have to speak, and then getting Brad up and having him answer them as a...
Well, that's, I thought, I thought I...
No, I've got, no, we've got a whole bunch more people, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I take it all back.
Okay. So, Brad, be ready. Bill Christian?
Hello, my name is Bill Christian. It's kind of hard to get up here with friends and neighbors with a contrary point of view, but I want to speak for our children and of the future. I've heard, this is kind of a religion to me, I am very concerned about where we are going. Many people have said, "We don't oppose solar, we don't oppose renewables, but we have to set a precedent, we have to keep them where they need to go." We, meaning people on earth, are burning over a million pounds of coal, oil, and gas every second. I really don't like that, and I think it's going to take something like a, like a world war approach, that you just have to do everything you can. Now, there are probably better places to put a solar field than where Ecos is proposed, but they own the land, they've done a lot of work, and I would prefer that Green Mountain Power switch over and buy electricity from a not visible and clean site that can provide power for nine-hundred-and-fifty homes in, in the Bennington area, paying fifty-eight-thousand dollars a year in property taxes towards our schools and roads. I would prefer that they do that than to continue, as they are now, buying power from a, a plant in southern New Hampshire, right beside where I grew up, in Londonderry, New Hampshire, which burns, it's very clean and modern, and has a very high, very high-capacity factor, runs twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five and a quarter days a year, and they burn a hundred-and-twenty-four-million cubic feet of natural gas every day. It really offends me that I'm buying electricity that's made in that way, and I think we, there's, that it, we don't have a lot of time to argue about which is more offensive, solar panels or power lines, paved streets, tidy homes and yards that we've carved out of the natural world for our own use, and which now seem very familiar. But there wouldn't be any people in Bennington if we cherished its natural beauty a hundred percent. If we're living here, and we're heating our homes, and we're using electricity, which we are right now, I think we need to get our power in the best way we can. And I know that you haven't been treated well by Ecos, I feel very bad for that, and I, I think that they have not done things right, that's an understatement, but I especially am concerned with the idea that we have to set a precedent and stop these solar panels going up, because we don't need to stop solar panels. Maybe we need to, you know, we have to keep them in the best possible places, but they need, we need an awful lot more solar, wind, hydro, whatever, we can't keep burning fossil fuel at the rate we are. I'm very concerned about the future, and that's who I'm speaking for right now. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, you came in late, do you have something you wanna say tonight? Please try to be concise and brief.
Aren't I always?
Briefer than usual.
I won't be as long as this gentleman here, given his religious beliefs. I'm disappointed in this board, the way they've been attacking us. Do you people understand that you won at the PSB? Has your lawyer, have you guys all talked to your lawyer? Has he told you that you've won this thing? Because you're acting like you've lost. You won. You won on behalf of our town plan and the voters that voted you in, not just this group here, or Mr. Christensen, or me. You won. Start celebrating it. Follow through with it. That's what we need. We need integrity from our Select Board. We need integrity from our town manager and his staff. We've paid umpteen thousand dollars for this town plan, and for you people to fold and not honor it, it's disgusting.
Mike, none of us, none of us, please, please...
Hey, he just wanted to start it.
You're right, Jim, don't interrupt, but...
I have a right to speak without anybody interrupting. I didn't interrupt Mr. Christensen. Don't interrupt me. You people now just need to start growing a backbone and defend the people of this community that pays Stu Hurd and his staff umpteen thousand dollars a year to sell out our town plan. You ought to be embarrassed, and you shouldn't be chairing this thing, and we talked about that yesterday, Mr. Kim. You know what I'm talking about, and I'll bring that up at a later date. And please tell me why Mr. Jacobs isn't chairing this thing, and he's recused himself.
You, you came in late, but he, he did explain that.
What did he say?
He did some early legal work, and...
Is he still taking money from this company?
No.
Not at all?
He's done.
He's done.
Long time ago.
So, that makes him all clear of this. Does he influence you people at all?
Mike, this is not an interrogation. Make your point and sit back.
No, I just want you to know, there will be political, and I'm not running against, so it doesn't mean running against you, but you people have to live in this community too. And if you can't look at the people that you walk into in your restaurants and all your stores and everything else, and say to them, "I defended your town plan," you can't do that if you fold on this. And I saw you get a little glimpse of Mr. Wilson over there when the lady was speaking before this gentleman, that she was too long ago on the board, and you looked right at him, and you shut her down.
No, that is absolutely wrong.
It isn't? I just saw him mouth up to you.
That's absolutely wrong.
I saw it, I was sitting there.
Okay. Any more points from you?
Yeah. I hope you people show some backbone and integrity for our community.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so, next speaker, Gregory Monik? No, gonna pass? Thanks, Gregory. Jerry Bird? Jerry, I'm going, you know, I know that it's been a long evening, but I'm, I'm gonna ask you also to be very concise, please.
Definitely. My name's Jerry Bird, I am a new person to this community, and I am really, first of all, sorry that there's been so, so much contention with this topic. I am not trying to tell any of these people at the Apple Hill Homeowners Association that they're not advocating... that they're not advocates for solar. I just wish we would have done it 30 years ago when we discovered the problem and we don't have the Larson Sea Ice Shelf breaking off anytime soon, being the largest ice cube ever to float around Antarctica and giving it fresh new access to warm water so that, you know, we can have just an enjoyable time seeing Florida disappear. What I'm really, and what makes me even sadder is that we could not develop a program with Brad, who I've talked to numerous times, and his company to help us go forward rather than to find a way that has been so divisive for so long. We, as a group of people here in the town, if we do indeed follow our values of sustainability, of the beauty of the green, of the forest, that we actually can work together. Now, I've screwed up in my life numerous times, but I've gone back and reworked it and actually, and sometimes, come to a better solution. I think that we deserve to give Brad and his company a chance to do that. I think that this time is incredibly important for us to move forward, and I would suggest that Brad pull his offers for donations and monies to the town and put all that stuff in the Putnam Block, because there's a few people here that are actually thinking about moving us forward. So, that would be my suggestion, and again, I was listening to Vice President Henry Wallace the other night on the Fourth of July, and one of the things that just struck me about some of his definitions, and I won't define them for you, I'll let you all look them up yourself, about pluralities, about destruction of the facts, or, I'm sorry, but I'm losing that, but the facts being screwed, misconstrued. So, I would urge you to go back and look at a guy that actually had the values of this country in his back pocket and worked his tail off under the threat of death to do it.
Just a reminder, Henry Wallace was FDR's third vice president.
Great, Jim, thanks.
Go, Jim. Okay. Last and not least, before we have just a brief question period from the board to Brad and maybe Jim Sullivan, Rose Telford. Nope? Going to pass?
Head now.
Thank you.
Head now.
Yeah, okay. So, are you on this list?
No, I'm not.
Then you get one minute.
Watch out, I'm a teacher. Okay, all of you, you're going to question my sanity. Two years ago, my husband and I, my hu, oh, I'm a teacher. Two years ago...
But then the people on TV can't hear you.
I have to be on television.
Yeah.
Okay. Two years, now, do I get my minute back?
Your name?
Betsy Haberfield.
Right, thank you, Betsy.
And my husband, Dr. Haberfield, and I bought the Eagle Square Mill. That's why you should question my sanity. We've already put $200,000 into just preserving the building. I think you're the kind of people we want, and we want, we love it here. We love it here, and you're all welcome to come over and watch the mill and listen to the water, breaks my heart, just going over that water fill all the time and benefiting no one. My son went to Syracuse University, he's a hydrologist, he's a professional engineer, and I asked him, "Tom, what's the best? What is the best way to get over our fossil fuel addiction?" And he said, "Mom, everything." And I think we all need to look at this area and what built it and what almost destroyed it, and that's water. This is a watershed. Tom's in Colorado. They cannot use the water that comes off their roof. Here, we have water, but we don't have a hell of a lot of sunshine. And, look, I'm from Buffalo. We will be here in a couple of years. I'm from Buffalo, Solar City. It's rebuilding the city, making the panels. Most people in Buffalo know better than to put them on their houses, because we have even more clouds. And I know, because I know a lot of the engineers in Buffalo, who are saying, "Betsy, don't put it in your house now." Everything is moving so quickly right now that it's just changing so quickly that what you would put on your house in five years is going to be useless. I have noticed, it's a huge scar if you go up Buck Hill, they bulldozed a hill, it's a mess. It's a scar. And since they bulldozed that hill and put in solar panels, our stream every time, well, like last week when we had the flood, which is something I think we really need to be concerned about, when we had the flooding, our creek turned completely muddy. And when I spoke to the previous owner, Kathy Lincoln, her husband, who's also a hydrologist, Tim Link's a hydrologist, they said, "Oh, yeah, that's runoff." So, when the gentleman over here says that you need to worry about runoff, that's what almost destroyed this area, when they clear cut, turned the woods into charcoal. Again, I have no history here, but I can read history, I'm a librarian. That could happen again, and I think we have to be really careful about it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, we're going to have Brad come up, but before that, Jim, would you be willing to come up and in 30 seconds or less?
No.
No?
30 seconds or less.
All right. Would you be willing to come up and give us a very brief confirmation of the regional commission solar map? Oh, did you want to speak as a citizen?
No, I want to speak on behalf of the regional plan commission, the regional plan. But honestly, my whole voice...
Come on up and sit down. All right. We're going to just, we're going to go all the way here.
Thank you. My hesitation to agree to speak that briefly and about a solar map is because the first and major point I wanted to make is that in, to provide some context about the regional plan and the regional energy plan that folks have been talking about on and off tonight, and the fact that it's so much more than a map, and it is very important to not refer to the regional energy plan as an individual map. It's a comprehensive energy plan, and it needs to be considered comprehensively. And so, context is very important. No one page, no one section stands alone. So, I would urge the town, the developer, everyone else, to consider the regional plan in its full context and the purpose of the regional plan as a whole. And I wanted to speak about the regional plan briefly. I'm not speaking about these solar projects, so just because I think it's important that people understand the regional plan and what it's to be used for and how it should not be used. So, very briefly, history, the regional commission developed the energy plan under a contract with the Public Service Department, starting over two years ago before there was any Act 174. We did it based on the contractual requirements that we had. Act 174 came along during the process. We tweaked the plan a little bit to make sure that it met the requirements and standards of Act 174, and it's been documented now that we, that the regional commission was successful in doing that. What is it? What is the regional energy plan, the regional plan? It's very much operates just like all regional plan, regional plans and regional planning processes have in the past. The regional plan, the regional energy plan provides a framework for town plans and town planning. That's the way that it has always worked in regional planning. We develop a framework, towns develop more detailed plans. We have a wonderful iterative process back and forth between the towns and the region working to refine those things, and we work very actively with the towns to help support town planning, and we'll continue to do so. You know, I do want to talk a little bit about the maps and the mapping process that are part of the plan, because everybody does focus on that. The maps are included in the plan include the resources that are required of any regional plan and, in fact, any town plan to be included under Act 174. They don't include anything else, really. We've been given, under Act 174 standards and under the contract we have with the Public Service Department, resources that we're supposed to put and illustrate on the maps, and that's what we've done. We, the expectation is that municipalities will take that basic regional plan map and add additional local concerns or local opportunities, resource potentials, and constraints to the map, and that those local plans will control in Section 1 or 248 processes. So, again, the regional, the regional energy plan maps are meant to illustrate a process, they're not to be used as sighting maps. The data, frankly, isn't that good. It's good data, but it's nothing that you can go to the mat with and say, "It is good to have a project right here." So, our caution that's expressed, I hope, fairly clearly in the plan is that they should not be used to cite an individual process. When those maps were really, the process was first identified, again, thinking comprehensively about the regional plan, the regional energy plan, that we are required to look at projections for future electricity demand, and one of the questions is, you know, is there potential for generating a certain amount of renewable energy within the region? So, those plans looked at the resource availabilities and the environmental constraints to determine if there is, if there is, in fact, sufficient land area in the region for different types of renewable energy development, including solar, hydroelectric, wind, biomass, and geothermal, the latter primarily for thermal. And at the same time, you know, I do want to point out that the process, it is a process, and the process is illustrated by the maps, and the process starts out, I think, very importantly, as has been pointed out, looking at a base layer of where the sun shines most consistently, where is the solar resource present most consistently and most abundantly. It's important that solar projects be developed where there's good access to solar radiation, because if there not, you'll have to develop more of them to get the same amount of electricity production. So, we want to start out with where solar energy is present. That resource layer, like all the other ones that I'll mention, are identified and available by the state of Vermont, they're available to anybody. So, there's no secret about our regional plan or how it was developed. That same information is generally available. The next thing you look at in that process is whether there are any critical environmental resources present, the type of environmental resources like prime wetland areas or rarely replaceable natural areas that would preclude any type of development, including renewable energy development. Those things are factored in and those things are taken out of the picture altogether. The next thing we look at are environmental resources that could complicate development but not necessarily preclude it, you know, things like agricultural land and certain classifications of wetlands and floodplain areas. So, those things are the things that are shown on the maps, and we tried to show them as clearly as possible. Those are the things, the base map that the town of Bennington has used in the, in the mapping exercise that the town has been going through, and that's exactly the way the process is supposed to work. And the last thing that I will say is, you know, I do think that the town has done a great job developing those, those solar sighting maps, and I do think that the work that the town of Bennington has done should be used as an example by other towns, and I want, and the only thing I'll say is that map, is we're incorporating that into the town plan amendment. It's not the only thing in the town plan amendment. For the town plan to be approved under Act 174, it also has to be a comprehensive town energy plan with data on current energy use, projections for future energy use, strategies for conservation and efficiency, as well as policies and maps regarding renewable energy development. So, it's, I just, I just want to put it out there, and again, go back to the main point I have to make, is that the regional plan and the town plans, both, they're comprehensive energy planning documents and really should be considered as such.
Thank you, Jim. It's a good reminder to read the book and not just look at the pictures. Thank you very much. Brad, why don't you come up? We at least want to ask you about erosion. I don't know if there are other questions, but, you know, this is really pushing it for the Maplewood people, so I'm going to ask the board to go right to specific questions. We're not negotiating. We'll have an executive session next meeting. We'll talk about whether or not, you know, we want to do anything at that, at that session, and we're not going to talk about the specifics of what, of what we will talk about then, but for factual questions about this proposal, have at it.
Okay. May I?
You go ahead, Jim.
Brad, with respect, thank you, by the way, for coming. Can you address the question of, you know, the runoff and what you've done to ameliorate or diminish the possibility of saturating the soil and therefore, you know, causing mudslides, et cetera?
Sure thing. I appreciate the question.
Before you start, could I just dovetail in with that? Are you aware in advance of the wetland that we're speaking about, that one gentleman mentioned on the property?
Let me ask, I'll answer Carson's question first, because it's quick and easy, and then I'll get to yours, Jim. It's also fairly quick and easy. The site has been fully evaluated and delineated for Class II wetlands. The A and R has been on-site with their own wetland scientists to verify and confirm that those delineations are correct. The wetlands shown on the maps that we provided are the only wetlands on-site.
Okay, last week, or two weeks ago, I asked you why you were so dug in about that piece of property, and you declined to answer, but I since learned that you did offer an answer to Dan Monks, and it was couched in, I think it's an acronym called SPEED. Can you explain that?
Well, absolutely. I think you're getting at the SPEED Power Purchase Agreement, and I'm not sure exactly what the question is, but I'm going to try to make a fast guess. The two projects on-site, Chelsea and Apple Hill, were awarded power purchase agreements under the Vermont SPEED Program. It's a program that offers long-term contracts for third-party power producers to sell energy to Vermont Energy Power Producers, I believe is the acronym. Those contracts, they're 25-year contracts, they are the project. A project doesn't really exist without a power purchase contract, so to speak. And those contracts, when they're awarded, are tied to the property that the projects are proposed on at the time the contract is awarded. We have investigated this, but the Vermont rules do not allow...
They're not transfer...
...those agreements to be moved to a different property, and so those are really anchors for these projects on this particular piece.
Stu, and don't go away. What's the, what are the anticipated annual taxes generated from this installation, if you recall?
I think Brad indicated it's $42,000 a year.
Yeah, for municipal, estimated.
All right, so can you tell us what you estimate to be the annual, well, yeah, the annual gross revenue and the gross revenue over the life of this project?
To the town?
No, to your company.
No.
What?
No.
No, what?
No, I won't share that information.
Well, all right, I'm not going to argue with you, but I think it's important to know when you're trying to come to us and...
It's a, it's a private, it's a private business.
Private business, Jim, I think. I think we move on.
I think that's it for now.
Did you get an answer to the runoff question?
Yeah, so how about, so are you satisfied with your erosion and runoff question?
Yes. There was one other question that I had, and that was with respect to the two, the wind and noise evaluations that you've done, and I see that those gentlemen are here tonight, and I, please, don't take this the wrong way, I do not mean to question your integrity.
Don't, then don't.
I'm not going to.
Okay.
But I think, it's my understanding that Libby has asked you and the Malones to appoint a third party to do another evaluation, and I just wonder, you know, frankly, to my mind, these are probably very decent men, but it's just strange, just a little bit of credulity when they're your hired people, and a third party, I think, would remove all doubt with you folks.
They are third parties, Jim. They are independent companies that we went out, we reviewed their credentials, and we hired them. I think to suggest anything other than the fact that these professionals have produced true and accurate results is to somehow be implying that they are willing to falsify their reports in exchange of payment.
No, and I don't mean to say that. But I, my point is to remove all doubt.
Well, this is always a dilemma when you have a, you know, somebody else doing the study, and I'm not sure we can solve that tonight. So, I guess I would say, are there other questions from the board for Brad? At this point, we will have other opportunities, so...
I have a quick question.
Brad, go ahead.
I don't remember. Have you used these individuals on other studies before?
We have not.
Good, thank you.
Jeanne, go ahead.
Could you respond? Yes, could you respond to the runoff question?
Yeah, absolutely. We jumped around there a little bit. So, on soil erosion, and this is included in our submissions to the Public Service Board, the projects are required to get a Vermont stormwater permit through the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources. It's a rigorous process, there are design standards, and at a very high-level, you know, layman's explanation, the projects have to be designed with stormwater controls such that essentially, no more stormwater runoff leaves the property after the project is built than leaves the property in its current condition. And so, there are a variety of stormwater controls called out in our original planning materials, including swales, retention basins, and it has been fully designed by a civil hydrologist engineer. And you have to go through that process to get the stormwater permit that would be required before project construction could begin.
Okay, thank you. Jeanne?
I have a question, but it's not necessarily for, it's not for Brad. It's for probably more like Dan or maybe Stu, so I can hold it.
Why don't you hold it?
I'll hold it, yeah.
Carson, do you have anything?
No.
Oh, okay, well then, why don't you let it fire?
Okay. I need some background on, apparently there's two other solar arrays that exist today on rural conservation land. And I think those happened before I was on the Select Board. I guess I'm curious, I don't know where they are, and I'm curious about how those projects developed and went through the process. Does anybody?
Well, the most recent one is the one that's located on Murphy Road. It is a parcel of land that was in an estate. The family got together and working with Encore Redevelopment, which is another environmental solar developer, to propose a solar array there. I think it went through the Planning Commission process, they made a presentation here, they took into consideration the prime ag land, the screening of the site itself, and I don't think the Select Board took a formal position.
There was a site visit, the Select Board went there.
But that's prime ag land or rural conservation?
It's both rural conservation. One of the reasons it is in the rural conservation land use area is because it is prime ag land. And so, they mitigated the amount of use of the prime ag land and actually are setting aside the land, I think, in a conservation easement so that there'll be no other development on the site other than the solar project. And that has been reviewed by this board, reviewed by the Planning Commission, and approved by the PSB. It is now under construction. On Murphy Road, that's the one that I can remember most recently. And I'm not sure where the other one is.
The Cabalia Project, I think, is that?
The which one? Cabalia Project.
Cabalia Project.
I looked at Dan to nod.
That was that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, out in the West End. I think we need to wrap this up, and I'm going to thank you, Brad. I'm going to thank everybody here tonight, because this conversation was very civil, and I really appreciated everybody keeping the temperature, everybody except for one person, keeping the temperature down. And it's not easy to get through it, but thank you, everybody, for your patience. And so, we're going to take a one-minute break. For anybody who wants to leave, you're welcome to, and then Maplewood folks, you'll have our full attention in one minute. Great. Leonard, would you come maybe get right over here, and we'll get right to it. At least have you set up, so by the time this guy gets back, we can go. I've given, I've given control back over to Tom, but Leonard, I'm really sorry about how long it took to get through that.
I have to tell you, I have a great appreciation for what the board deals with with their matters. After sitting through this, I certainly appreciate everything that you do. I'm not, I'm not available to raise your salaries, but I would certainly vote to do that, because it takes a great deal of patience.
We'd still be underpaid, probably.
I think you probably would.
Some folks would say we're overcompensated, so...
No, I think it takes a great deal of personality to be able to sit through what I just saw. So, I appreciate all of you. I'm meeting you for the first time, and I appreciate you.
Thanks, Leonard. Thank you. And I think we're going to start, and let Jim catch up.
Well, can I?
Leonard, go ahead, introduce yourself, and I can see on our agenda, it's the Maplewood Subdivision Road Acceptance Issue question that we're going to be discussing.
Sure. May I approach?
Please do.
I have a copy of the presentation. Thank you.
We'll pass them out. Thanks.
This will be, I believe, much shorter than your previous matter. And I'm just going to read right from script here, because I think it points out exactly what the question and the issue is that I want to put to the board tonight. And I'm not expecting an answer, but I would like some consideration where we maybe have either a continued dialogue or yet another presentation after this. So, this is my initial cut at speaking to the board. And I've been bold enough to represent myself as the taxpayers of Jane Lane Duffy Drive and Hildar Hill, because I want to make that distinction to you now, because there may be some different types of terminology used here. And I want to address the board and let you know that we are taxpayers there. It's very important to understand that.
Before you get going, Leonard, do you represent, are you the president of the association of what state?
Well, that's why I wanted to stay away from that issue, and I want to just talk about us as being the taxpayers at this point.
Okay. You just, you say you represent yourself?
We can, we can, we can go into that at a later discussion.
Okay.
I don't want that to be the encumbrance on any type of discussion at this point.
Okay, good.
So, I am presenting to the board a development and highway acceptance petition to you, and be advised that this is a formal request for the Bennington Select Board to issue town approval for the acceptance of the above roads. Over the course of the last 25 years, the revenue stream from this development via real estate and water and sewer is in excess of $4 million. The annual revenue stream is approximately a quarter of a million dollars, and that includes both property taxes and the water and sewer levies. So, that's a pretty good revenue stream. The taxpayer of these roads have paid approximately $8,000 a year to maintain these roads and receive no consideration from the town for this work. The town and private citizens routinely use these roads and do not contribute to any of the maintenance, and they are part of the emergency safety system. It is requested that the town immediately accept and provide the necessary pavement that these taxpayers are calling for, and any legal considerations necessary for this activity will be provided, short and sweet.
Okay. Is this a request to formally accept the roadway, the network in the developments? Is that a?
That's the request. The request is for the town to take the roads and to pave them.
Okay. What is the policy? What is the procedure for making that happen?
Well, in general, and this, Leonard and I began our conversations about this issue back in late April, early May. And normally, a private development, private roadways, would make a request of the town to take over the roadway system. In this particular case, it's somewhat unique, because we have already taken over the water and sewer systems that exist within the development, and that was done some time ago. I don't have right off the top of my head.
Was that, before you leave that, was that a process, an application?
That was a process that came through a Select Board at that time, and it was, given the consideration that there is a pump station on one of the streets, that the sewer, sewer system connects through the system, the water system also connects through the system, we felt at that time it was probably advantageous for us to take that over and maintain it. It did meet our standards at the time it was taken over, and that's the issue that we have today. We would normally require the developer or the homeowners' association to bring these roads current with current subdivision regulations. Now, this development is a very old development, it has been around for a long time. And unfortunately, when it was built, the developer was not required to pave those roads. But at that time, he was not interested in having the roads taken over by the town, for whatever reason. And now, some, many years later, we have drainage ways and gravel road system that does not comply with our subdivision regulations and the standards for highway acceptance. In order to get there, they would have to make sure that all of the drainage ways are functioning as they were designed, that their stormwater, state stormwater permit is current, and that the properties were designed according to that permit, then any easements for drainage off of the roadway system were in place and able to be transferred from the owners to the town, and that the road be paved.
How many feet are this?
Let's see. I can tell you what the estimate is, it's about 116,000 to pave that road. It's approx, I can't tell you, 1,615 tons, at about $72 a ton was the price that RJ quoted. We did, RJ did go up and take a look at the subdivision, put together an estimate of cost that we did share with Leonard and the folks at the Maplewood subdivision. And that's where the discussion stopped. And Leonard asked for time to come to the board and make the request directly to the board, given the various things he's already laid out here as to what they've paid in taxes, how long the subdivision has existed, and so, that's where we are today.
It looks like about 40 houses, is that right?
It's 40 houses, by my understanding. It's three roads, and I also had an estimate done on the amount of work to be done there, and it varies depending upon who you speak with. But the roads are in pretty good shape, and I would encourage all of the board members to please just take a ride up through. You'll see they're very nice properties, very nice tax base, could be a win-win for this town, and that's why I'm approaching it with goodwill.
Is the, is the roadway presently close to what we would want or need when we take it?
It's, well, the drainage, the drainage ways are not in bad condition. There are some culverts, driveway culverts, that might have to be upgraded or replaced. I don't have those kinds of specifics here. But the principal cost is the pavement. Assuming that you would put down two inches of base course and a one-inch wear course, you're talking about three inches of pavement over the entire subdivision.
Are there other developments that would be, if we did this, that we would have an issue, that we would have to finish their project?
I don't think that there are any outstanding developments right now. If you recall, we just went through this process with Skeeter Jelly in his subdivision, where he had paved the roads, and over the years, they had been deteriorated. And so, he had to do some additional work to bring those roads back to standard. He had to do all of the drainage, drainage ways and secure all of the necessary easements. So, he went through that process, and generally, it requires a notice of hearing. There's a 30-day notice that goes to every adjoining property owner that the town is intending to take over the road. That notice is developed by the association or the developer, posted by the developer, mailed to all of the adjoiningers by the developer. There is an order that is then developed by the developer, and I've provided samples to these folks, as well as some others that are coming forward with a lot smaller subdivisions, but, and then there is that public hearing. The hearing is preceded by a site visit, where board members can meet at the site, walk the site, take a look at it, develop any questions or comments they might have during the hearing process. And then there is a public hearing at which the board follows the process of laying out and accepting a road for municipal highway. So, it's a, probably a 30 to 45-day process, start to finish. But generally, you're starting with the roads meeting our standards.
And that, meeting standards, is a policy? I'm concerned, so that last example you just gave is somebody that we actually did make go through the process?
Oh, yes.
That was the last one. And was it a similar budget? Was it about the same amount of money?
No, it probably wasn't a similar budget, because the roads had already been paved. There were only a couple of, I think there was one cul-de-sac that hadn't yet been paved.
But he had paid for that paving?
Oh, yes. He had done all of that work early on, and his was a subdivision that had been regulated to the point where he could only build so many houses a year.
I see.
Because there was an issue with the schools at the time his permit was granted. So, it took him a long time to finish the subdivision. In this particular case, the developer, upon the sale of the 22nd lot, turned over the entire maintenance of the subdivision to the homeowners' association. And so, and I don't know how long ago that was, but probably decades.
Oh, yeah. I talked to one resident, just for a little color on this subject, who's lived there. He was one of the first persons in, and he's pretty well-known to the community. I won't, I won't use his last name, but his first name is Bob, and he did a lot of concrete work. And he's lived there 25 years, thereabouts. And what he's told me over time was, is that he estimates he's paid over $200,000, that magic number we've heard all night tonight, a loan in property taxes. So, just to kind of put a little color on, and I, and I think there's several other residents in that same boat. What would I find, I'm a Vermont boy too, so I went to the University of Vermont and Mount Anthony, so I, I'm very, very much in tune with a lot of what was said here tonight on other matters. But the one thing that I want to let you know is that, at times, even though we're educated here and all, sometimes it's pretty embarrassing when we see, when we have people come to our community, see the development I live in, and they have to drive on a dirt road, and they ask me, "Why is that?" And I say, "I'm not quite sure, but I'm going to look into it." And so, that's another reason I'm here, is that I think we need to look at what we can do to make this a win-win for our community here.
Was there, just before I turn it over, was there a homeowners' association that's been involved with the maintenance and repairs of the roadway now?
I think when, when we opened that door, I think we have somewhat of a murky history. I think over time, this is, this association that was in charge and should have, should have done the work, has probably disbanded. It probably no longer has teeth. I'm not even sure it has legal standing anymore. So, that's why I preface this as the taxpayers.
Got it.
Because I don't know, and I, and I don't believe we're going to find very much legal encumbrance on this at all. I think we're going to find that it's, you're basically dealing with 40 taxpayers at this point.
So, we could, we could assume off that there's no association dues out of quarterly, or?
And that's the interesting part. The interesting part is that some people seem to still pay something, and some don't. So, I don't really know. I can't answer your question in the, in the way that you would probably want me to. It's a very murky type of situation. There is someone who is still paying bills, and they're paying almost $8,000 a year. But I don't know if they have actually any, any recourse for the residents there to draw money back.
What does the money go to? Is there a?
Plowing, grading, keeping the roads up. Basically, it's the entire maintenance scheme that you put on a road. And the consequence is, is that, you know, we have safety issues here. We also have an issue where the town has investment underneath the roads, drawing revenue from it. So, it's a situation I think we really need to remediate. We really need to get, get it to the right legal standing with the town owning the roads.
And using the Skeeter example, is the developer still in the picture? Is he, he or she still with us, or?
I, I don't think there's any bearing for the developer. I think the developer's completely gone at this point. They may, they may well live in the community. I don't want to, I don't want to say anything about who that is and whether there's any recourse to make the developer belly up to the bar here and do the right thing.
I'm not shooting the messenger, I promise.
Pardon?
I'm not shooting the messenger.
No, no, and that's all right. But I do understand your question. It seems like somewhere along the line, something got dropped. And unfortunately, now, we're in a position where we need, we need to rectify this and fix it. We need to fix it for everybody.
And it's not, it's, it's, it's really the law. Our subdivision regulations do require this. So, it's not a policy of the town that this, we make these requirements. These are the requirements the developers are held to.
When they cut their permit for that-
That's right. Yeah. And unfortunately, in this particular case, there was not a desire at the time to pave the road, nor was there a requirement that that road be paved in order to get approval. But things change, times change. I can tell you that I've met with various individuals there, representing at one time the homeowners association, to have this same conversation about what would need to be done in order to bring those roads up to standards of the town who take them over. And the answer, at least from my perspective, has been pretty much the same all along.
Other board members?
So, what brings you, what made you finally make this request? Is it, is it a safety issue? Is it just, it seems time, or?
It's all, it's all of what's laid out here. That's why I printed it up for you to be able to review. You know, but a lot of times when we have discussions like this, not everything is always consumed at the, at an appropriate level. So, I'd like you to at least consider this, think about this, and maybe come to a conclusion that this is good for the community, and we can move forward and make, make good progress and make a, make a good situation here.
I can't promise you anything, other than a visit with a couple of us, just to get a lay of the land to-
Four-wheeling?
Yep. Four-wheeling? No, I think it's probably, the roads are probably great. We'll get our bicycles out.
That's good. It is, it's, you know, you seem like an empathetic guy, and I would, you're probably salesman, because I wouldn't buy anything from you. But I, I, I bet you could imagine how tough it is sitting in our seat. And if, if, if you were in our seat, and we had made everybody else do it, fix up the road, and then, and then somebody came to you and said, "Well, now I want you to do this road," what would be the case? Like, what's the case for, why we should do that road when we've made everybody else fix them up?
Well, I do have a little bit of background, and I won't, I can't typically just answer your question straight on, because you're concerned about setting precedents, which clearly I heard two hours of tonight. So, and I do understand your question. You're concerned that if you open the floodgates here, that you're going to have a lot of people coming and asking you to pave the roads for them. The two things that I want to point out to you, and it's, and it's said over and over again, $4 million, that's a lot of revenue. We're talking about a lot of revenue that came into the town, with very little, very little that came back to that community. That community has actually been paying $200,000 over the course of 20 years, just to maintain those roads. And there was never a consideration given to any of the tax bills to do that. So, it's really been, for some of these, especially these, these people that have been there for 25 years, I feel really bad for them. I feel bad for all of the people that are there, but I feel really bad for them. And the one thing that they leave me with and they tell me is, "I just want my road paved." And, and that's a hard question, isn't it? "I just want my road paved," talking about somebody who's spent his whole life here, contractor, nice man, I'm sure you probably all know him. And that's all he said to me tonight. He says, "I know you're going. I just want my road paved." So, I'm hoping that I can bring back to him and say, "You know what? You're going to get your road paved." And so, that's what, that's how I'm going to answer your question. I hope it, it may not have been direct, but that's how I'm going to answer it for you.
When the tax bills are prepared, and the listers look at the value of the property, is there consideration made as to road condition, access, and all of those things when the tax-
I really, I don't know. I doubt that it would be significant. If, you know, a good gravel road is, is as good as a good paved road. I think that when the listers are out assessing properties, they're looking at the lot, the quality of the construction, the type of construction, the home itself, more so than, than whether or not the road is paved or not. But I, I don't know that for a fact.
It feels to me like we owe it to them to go out and take a look at it.
I certainly agree. Robert, I know, this is, if you, would you mind if you have an accomplice at your table there?
Mr. Eric, quickly, my name is Robert Ebert. I'm on the board of listers. All I can say, anecdotally, is in our discussions, a value, we've never discussed the quality of the road leading to a property as part of the property.
Great.
But when people come in to grieve their taxes, wouldn't it be out of line for them to bring that up as a point?
Nothing would be out of line. But in my experience, no one has ever mentioned the quality of their, their road leading up to their house as part of the discussion. So, that's just the experience I've had.
Thanks, Robert. That's helpful. Is there anything more that we can do tonight? We will make arrangements to visit with you up there. And probably be three of us from a committee. And we might have RJ or someone accompany us, so we know what we're looking at.
Yeah. I'll send around a copy of, an email that gives Len's email address, and also lays out what I basically told you tonight, that I sent on to them. And you folks can make arrangements, and staff will be there when you need us.
Thank you very much. Thanks for-
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Robert, the word again.
We have to deal with the DPW facility bond sale. Do you mind, Board, if we just move that up?
Do it.
I think it's pretty quickly accomplished.
Yes. I have for you tonight, a resolution and certificate, municipality tax certificate, a loan agreement, a certificate of registration, and an IRS Section 148 certification. There are four places to sign, three for the select board, one for the chair. And the chair is marked chair. Pretty obvious.
I like that mark.
I would ask that you make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution, and that you accept this as the bond payment. This is the second, essentially the second half of the bonds that were approved earlier. This allows us to borrow the rest of the money to finish the project.
Great. I have a motion and a second, someone?
A second.
To waive the reading and proceed with. All in favor of that, or any discussion, I should say? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's seven in favor. No objections or objections. Okay. It's being circulated. The next item on the item that I, our agenda that I bumped a bit, is the charter review committee appointments. I think we are ready tonight, if you would want to join in that process. And we will do it by Australian ballot, which seems to be the more, most favored and more appropriate way to do this. We're looking for seven appointees to the committee. And I think manager is circulating the form of ballot. Is the board comfortable in proceeding with that tonight?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself, because I missed-
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
I don't?
No.
It's a, it's your prerogative. It's not a legal one.
Because I didn't hear.
But you read their-
You read their applications.
Read their applications.
Okay.
Right. And you know them, so if you-
No, I don't know all these people.
It's up to you. You know, you feel, it's your prerogative. And, but we are looking for a, seven members. And what we'll do is complete those, fold them, give them to the manager, and manager will do the calculations and-
I'll vote on the ones that I've listened to.
Or rather-
Please vote for not more than seven.
Don't sign it, by the way.
It was fun having those charter interviews.
Yes.
A lot of good people showed up, and it was really inspiring that they were willing to kind of-
I just, I appreciated everyone filling the applications out. The dialogue was great. It's interesting. Folks talked about, you know, one, why are we doing this? Two, you know, what about, what, why? And I can't, I don't come with any preconceived decisions relative to the, to the process. And it certainly was welcome. It was, you know, I just appreciated folks standing up and being, wanting to be involved in the process, which could extend over the next four to five months. And that's a commitment of time, energy. The plan will be to, once the committee is appointed and the acceptance is up through the committee, we'll give, we'll prepare a charge from the board, which we will share with the committee at their initial meeting. And at that particular point in time, I expect they will organize into a chair and vice chair position. And our purpose in doing this is not to abrogate responsibility, because everything comes back to us in the form of a recommendation from that committee. And it's going to be, it's important that that committee has the resources. And with each one, we've indicated that we have every expectancy to provide those resources. And that will be available in the first meeting right through. I think it'll be kind of interesting, exciting. We've got a charter that is provided to us by the state of Vermont, because, again, this process goes from the committee, to the board, to the electorate, and then to the state to approve or not. And our charter comes from the state, doesn't come from the select board, and doesn't come from the voters even. But we'll be able to set that in motion, because our charter, it's time to look at it, update it, and maybe add to it, or subtract from it. I'm kind of going to be interested to see how the committee takes on their responsibility. Any other thoughts that you've gleaned from the discussions we had with the program group? I hope that they get started somewhere in the mid-August.
Yeah, I do want to say, I was really impressed with the number of people who had read through the charter and already had just a list of questions and, and, you know, thoughts about jumping off places. I thought, I was, yeah, I was really impressed by just how seriously people took this process.
Yeah, that charter is dry reading. So, at least we know 10 more people in Bennington have read our charter. Right? So, that's an accomplishment.
Yeah, it is. But it is a governing document that sets us in motion.
Not saying it's not important, but it's dry.
Well, as I've said amongst ourselves, you know, the people that are going to sit on this board are the Bennington's equivalent of the appointment of a Supreme Court Justice. The impact that their decisions and their work may very well live on in perpetuity for the town of Bennington and the people of Bennington. So, it's very important. It's very important work.
I'd use the analogy probably of an appeal court. And because-
I'll have it your way.
Okay. Because what happens is, the process goes from the committee to us, then through the, so the Supreme Court probably is, if you want to use that analogy, is the legislators that will look at our charter.
I'm prepared with the, we have seven top vote-getters. I'll just read them alphabetically. John Cohen, Robert A. Bear, Lynn Green, Michael Keen, Daniel Malmberg, Sean Marie Aller, and Robert Plunkett. The top seven.
You'll send out letters of invitation to the, to those?
Will do.
Okay. Thank you. And again, thanks to all of the applicants. It's really, we'll find another job for you, because there'll be many. Sure. Thank you. Other business from the town manager?
I don't have anything. I won't, we're pushing nine o'clock, so I'll just be satisfied to sit here quietly.
No, Stu, I want you to talk about the findings that you found out about the water bottling facility. This is something that people have bitched and moaned about for a generation. And this, this needs to be explained, and you need to be applauded for the work that you did, because I certainly was a pain in your ass.
It really wasn't that much work. But I did speak with an individual who's involved in water bottling. His first indication was, is that small water bottling facilities are slowly being bought out or going out of business, because they can no longer compete in the regional competition that is generated. This particular company is building, I think it's 13th water bottling facility. And they are, bottling facilities now all up and down the East Coast, because that's where their markets are. And in order to stay in the game, they have to move and bottle where, in fact, their, their customers are. He indicated that their newest facility, they are buying the building and retrofitting it for a bottling facility, will cost them $18 million in renovations and equipment. And a successful company must net at least 18 cents per case of water. And if, in fact, a company can sell their water at a $1 a case wholesale, then they might be able to net 18 cents on that particular case.
$1 a case?
$1 a case. So-
Big money.
Well, we buy it for $2.98.
But we're talking about facilities that are, that are, you know, bottling 18 to 20 million bottles of water on an annual basis. And, and that's what you need to do in order to stay in the business and stay in the game, and compete against the companies like Coca-Cola and Pepsi-Cola, who are, have moved into the water bottling market in a very big way.
Well, I was actually going to use a teahop, a view, Jim. If there's a company out there that's interested, we have great water. We certainly have the source. But also, maybe more important, there have been a number of folks in the community have come before us. If you could send that and make sure that they get that information firsthand from your office-
Be glad to.
Yeah. Thanks.
I say if somebody wants to come and do an $18 million water bottling plant in Bennington, we give them the water and, and take the jobs.
I'm fine.
Don't get away there in negotiating position.
I'd take that.
Anything else?
No, that's really all I've got. I mean, just a very brief report. We all did suffer some storm damage. We were not hit as hard as Housick Falls or Brandon, Vermont. But we estimate that the cost to repair all of our roads, and much of the work is actually nearly finished, at around $100,000. Now, that's not just materials, that's labor, equipment, and materials, which is the kind of dollars you would build if you were to have it, an emergency declared and federal funds were available. You would, you would count your labor and your equipment costs. So, we, we got out of it pretty well. We still have our river scientists coming down. The, there was some scouring along the, one of the abutments of the Brooklyn Bridge, that we want to take a look at. We're probably going to have to push back into place. And we lost, the only road we really lost was Emmons Road, which is a very short road that comes off of the Orbed Road, up over the, up over the hill and into New York State. And there are actually no Bennington residents on it, I believe. But that was washed out entirely. And, and those roads, River Road, Orbed Road, all suffered some significant damage. But most of it can be repaired by our crews and our staff with material we have on hand.
So, it's not going to be a necessary reserve issue?
It will. We, we expect that the work will be done, other than Emmons Road, we expect the work will be done by the end of the week.
And it doesn't fall into the threshold of FEMA application?
Statewide, statewide, they might, they might generate enough estimated damages to bring in federal government. But right now, Chris Taft, who is the head of the state highway garage here, Bone Road, does not think Bennington County is going to rise to the level it needs to in order to be a part of that declaration.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Carson?
No.
Just one thing. I had a constituent contact me over the weekend about a tree that is, looks to be in very seriously bad shape, that is town-owned. And I talked with Stu earlier in the day, today, about that, and he said it will be looked at. But more to the point, I want to encourage and I thank the lady that contacted me, and remind us as a board that we're here to serve. And I hope for those people who are on Facebook, and there is a concern that they have, that they'll contact me or any one of us. It's why we're here. It's why we're here.
Thanks.
Say goodnight, Dick.
Goodnight, Gracie.
Nobody watched laughing?
Yeah, I don't want to go there. He's actually talking about Gracie. I mean, really.
Turns it out, of course.
Yeah, yeah. Say the magic word, and that's adjournment. Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.